Great to see everyone here tonight. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening on May 1st. I now call this meeting to order. I invite all to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Thank you.
We're excited to be here in person with the options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. This is one of my favorite times of the year. We get to celebrate our students with 4.0 grade point averages and we have a lot of folks to congratulate. So the way this is going to work is I will call up the principals one at a time and the students will be ushered in to receive their certificates. And each school will have an opportunity to take a group photo with all the council members after the name has been read. I believe our city clerk, she wants us to line up over by the city flags so and wait for your photos. So we will start with Hillsdale High and Assistant Principal Sarah Preski-Pomeranz... Pomeranz? Help me out here. Oh, welcome Jeff Gilbert, lead principal.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for the invitation. It's wonderful to be back here in person. This is my 33rd year in education and when people find out that you're that you work at a high school, the most common response is, "I don't know how you do that." And they like, that's a lot of teenagers. And what I want to tell them is this, teenagers have never been better than they are today. They've never been more compassionate, more thoughtful, more committed to their community. They are smarter, they are more hardworking and today we get to celebrate the best of that. And as a member of this community, as a parent in this community and as somebody who is growing older by the day, it is wonderful to know that we are going to turn this world over to them. It doesn't mean it's been easy for them. There have been tremendous difficulties over these last four years of their high school career and they are dealing with a lot, whether that's social media or global warming or ongoing issues in this space, in our democracy. But I am super proud of this group of people and I'm proud to be able to give them certificates. And so, we will start with Alyssa Jewels Abad. And we have we have some people who are not here. I'll read their name. Pooja Agarwal. Naama Akiva. Abigail Alexander. Nanako Arima. Leil Cheng. Sophia Cheng. Zachary Klumek.
There you are.
Allison Kaufman. Not here Frankie Corbett. Emily Duncan. Yuka Facuta. Vivian Gilbert. She's my baby. Not here Kaia Henderson. Kaia Kumar. Sarah Kusamoto. Calvin Lee. Caroline Lim. Catherine Lim. Fiona Liu. Han Ning Liu. Not here Robin Matsumoto. Kaylee Ng. Lachlan North. Claire Parham. Cadence Pulse. Samra Ramen. Roisin Scallon. Amelia Schultz. Megan Seiler. Jamie Sloves. Samantha Snaylor. Not here. Logan Samosa. Tyler Shishi. Not here. Suishi. Andrea Taylor. Catherine Westberg. And Angelica Yan.
Hello? Okay, one moment, please. Can we have council like maybe three on one side, two on the other? There's some room on the top line up there too. Here we go. Go up above. How is that view? Are you guys seeing everybody? You can get them all? Okay, let me get out of the way. One, two, three cheese. One, two, three Hillsdale. Okay. Now council, you can come back up. And Hillsdale 4.0 students, congratulations. If you can very quietly go out this door here while we get ready for the next high school. And parents, we invite you to stay if you can. Okay, close the doors, please. Door monitors, if we can get the doors closed? If we could close the doors, please? All right. Mayor Lee. Okay, well, we would love to welcome up the Dons from Aragon with Principal Valerie Arbizou. And please, please feel free to make some remarks.
Thank you for having us this evening. Councilpeople, mayor, all of our friends and family and all of our students. This group of students, if you'll remember, were freshmen when we shut everything down and thought we'd be right back after spring break. Surprise. And then we were like, stay home for almost another whole year. And then they have come back in force in the last two years as juniors and seniors. And I can't explain enough how resilient and persistent and kind and wonderful really this class is. This is my 21st year in working with high school students. And I told them this at their senior meeting and I know this is being recorded so it's probably going to come back to haunt me. But they're really my favorite class so far. Just because they are so kind. If you if you if you're not familiar with Aragon or the students or the community who are there, this really is a special place to be. And so does by far, you know, my honor and pleasure to be here to acknowledge these students. They all got all As and credit during that crazy, crazy semester. All four years of high school and every class they took. It doesn't matter if it was AP or PE. They got all As all throughout. So this is amazing. So congratulations before we start handing these things out. Well done. I don't know what the next part is. Okay, are they are they shaking my hand or they? Oh, cool. Brilliant. You guys get to shake everybody's hands. Okay, we're going to start with Isabella Bartlewski. Good job. And I'm going to name everybody who got a 4.0. We have 44 this year, by the way. Brennan Chan. Guramrit Dillon. And Eric Dodge. Kiana Ducanti. Trinity Izzell. Valerie Phan. Vidant Ghar. Aurelia Gerber. Armida Godrahimy. Annie Noustie Clolier. I was getting ahead of myself. Sophia Howe. Hannah Chow. Michelle Jin. Colin Johnson. Lucas Casper. Monami Kyathi. Nicholas Ketchum. Danielle Levy. Sebastian Ludwig. Yay! Katie Looktefeld. Madeline McGinty. Joseph Niemati. Aha! Zoe Neal is my next one. What's your banana waiting for you? Anna Papas. Good job. Angelina Parker. Sophia Quinn. David Tsai. Jalisa Sandoval. Avina Schwartzkopf. Rish Kumar Selvakumar. Artas Azian. Susannah Tsai. Logan Wall. Katherine Wang. Benjamin Wen. Christian Wong. Pilar Wood. Evan Wu. Zhao Yu Wu. Karissa Yang. Anna Yi. And then Nikhil Yun. And Sarah Yu. Again, thank you so much for honoring all of our kids.
Okay, if we could have the, hold on a second. If we can have the tallest students in the back row and we need you to come and be a second row here or be right in front. So we can't get you all the way down there. So we gotta hustle in. There you go. That works great. Come on in. In front, in front is good. Council, come on down. Whoa. Try not to, try not to block anyone. Okay, wait, Adam, get in somewhere. Wait, we're not quite ready yet. Rich and Lisa, are you in? Principal? Yeah, maybe right behind or right behind or something. Okay. If you're tall, very good, go down. That's perfect. All right, one, two, three. There you go. There have never been this many cameras in the council chambers. Okay, one more minute. Do you want to give a goofy look? Nope, serious 4.0s. Okay. Okay, and I need one official one from the city. I didn't want to get in front of you.
You might need to move back a little bit.
Oops, that's my thumb. They're patient, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. We are San Mateo High School. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Yvonne Chu and I am the principal of San Mateo High School. Thank you for having us here this evening to recognize the accomplishments of the class of 2023's valedictorians. I have the honor and the privilege to introduce to you San Mateo's High School's 10 valedictorians. So it will be a little shorter presentation, a small but extremely mighty group. So as you may have noticed, it is not easy to earn all As at San Mateo High Schools in all of your classes over the course of four years. At San Mateo, we have encouraged our students to pursue their interests, yet maintain a healthy balance between having fun and not overscheduling themselves. Our valedictorians have certainly taken advantage of our electives and our extracurricular activities. Some interesting facts about our group. Our valedictorians include students who have taken anywhere from two to 13 advanced placement courses and one of our valedictorians is a middle college student. Their rated GPA ranges from 4.05 to a 4.63. Their favorite subjects include, but are not limited to, limited to the sciences, chemistry, physics, computer science, biology. Half of our valedictorians studied French. Half were biotech summer internship students. Two of them are San Mateo High School Jefferson Award winners. They have been active in such areas as student government, leadership, biotech, and mock trial. They include athletes and artists with varying interests ranging from STEM and computer science to political science and public policy. They are resilient, compassionate, responsible go-getters who have high emotional intelligence and are just great all-around human beings. I am so proud to introduce to you San Mateo High School's class of 2023 valedictorians, Rebecca Bus. Katie Hong. Claire Kuzemko. Belly Laird. Now I'm blinking. I'm like, oh my gosh, no. Oh my God, Jermaine Lei. Claire Sapugai. Vanshika Sharma. Adwita Singha. And Harry Wang. One of our valedictorians couldn't make it this evening, Nicholas Kirahada. So thank you very much. Go Bearcats.
All right, again, we're going to need you to squeeze in. We're going to be behind this ramp here. And so from that edge to that edge, we can get you in. We want council on your side and in front and not blocking any of you. Okay, squeeze tighter, 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 tighter. We get everybody in. And I'll let Anne suffer. Yay, San Mateo High School!
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. I need one official one for the city. Can you just, do you want me to? One more for the city?
Oh, sorry.
One, two, three. San Mateo High, one more time.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of City Council. My name is Charlie McGrath and I am the principal at Unipero Sarah High School. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize our 14 students who are valedictorians at Sarah High School, only two of which are able to be with us tonight because of varying scheduling conflicts and other things happening at school. All of our students are part of our honors and our AP program from freshman year all the way up through senior year, as well as lifelong members of the National Honor Society, various athletic teams, visual and performing arts, and some of whom do their community service hours both here in the city of San Mateo, the county of San Mateo, and the Greater Bay Area. It's always a pleasure to come to City Hall as we are neighbors up the street. So it's always nice to kind of be here. so it's always nice to kind of be here. Our students tonight represent what it means to be a student at Sarah High School over all four years. We form our men into people who are people of compassion, integrity, respect, community, inclusion, wisdom, faith, and service. So, our two students who are with us tonight, Vincent Martini and Theodore Kaiser, represent all of those things that we are most proud of. Vincent will be going off to Cal Poly to major in political science, and Teddy will be going off to the University of Pennsylvania to major in biology. So, it's my honor to present them to you here tonight, and we thank you for what you do here for our families here in San Mateo as well. So... Vincent Martini, sorry, Vincent De Martini. And Theodore Kaiser.
Congratulations, Theodore.
And council?
Okay, congratulations to the San Mateo High School 4.0 grade point average graduates. Before we move on to the remaining business on tonight's agenda, we'll take a five-to-10-minute break to allow us to reset council chambers. See you soon.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back, everyone. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number three, Boards and Commissions Confirm Reappointments and Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee. For the record, there is a correction to a clerical error on this item. The recruitments for these vacancies opened on April 28th, not April 24th. The recruitment window nevertheless maintains our standard practice of three weeks. Item number four, Complete Streets North Central Appropriation and Agreement. Item number five, Reasonable Accommodation Policy for Public Meetings Adoption. And finally, item number six, Police Department Patrol Vehicles Purchase Contract.
Are there any members of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull item six and bring it just for a few questions before we put it back on, potentially.
And I would like to pull item number four.
And I would like to pull item number three.
Oh my gosh.
There you have it. So, at this point then, we will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar items. Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
If I could say this is for consent calendar items, number, the items not polled, which are item number two or item number five. Because we are polling three, four, and six. So, we'll consider those items separately. So, any members of the public who would like to comment on items number two or items number four?
So, comments for two and four. Sorry, two and five.
Sorry, my fault. Okay, I have no speaker slips on that. I do have speaker slips on items two and four, though. So, first of all, would you like to take a vote? On the two items, two and five?
I make a motion to approve consent calendar items two and five.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item carries five zero.
Thank you.
Next up is consent calendar item number three.
Okay, so up for discussion is consent calendar item number three. Remind me who pulled that? Okay, Councilmember Hedges, please go ahead.
I don't have a problem with this. I just wanted to make people aware in the community that there are positions open for boards and commissions. And if we could go forward with that and have staff reiterate what's available.
Was that a question to our city clerk?
Yes.
I am so sorry. I did not hear the question.
Just go through what's available for people with the boards and commissions.
We have three openings at this time, one on the Personnel Board, one on the Senior Citizens Commission, and one on the Park and Recreation Commission.
And all residents of San Mateo can take part in applying for those?
Yes, at this time, our rules allow for all registered voters in the city of San Mateo to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Nash, did you pull number four?
I did, thank you. I also wanted to make the community aware.
We need to take a vote on item number three first before moving on.
Okay.
Move approval of item number three?
Second.
And was there, excuse me, was there any public comment on item number three?
I don't have public comment on item number three. Any public comment on item number three? No, I don't have. It was just polled.
Do we need to do another public comment for all of the polled items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, so there's no public comment for item number four?
Number three.
Number three.
So, we're taking a vote. We have a motion in a second. I can call roll.
Yes, please, call roll.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. On to number four. I also wanted to make the community aware of this. This is the Complete Streets North Central Appropriation and Agreement. And a few council meetings ago, we had very active representation from the North Central community asking for council and staff to take a much closer look at what was going on with transportation options in North Central. And staff and the council made a commitment to do that that evening, and this is the contract that will enable that. So, I just wanted everyone to take a look at it. If you're interested, it's item number four, and I think this will be a great step forward, and I look forward to all the community getting involved in the outreach for this one. Thank you.
And we do have a public comment for item number four?
Before we get to that, I actually had a question. I was intending to pull that item as well. I've been working on getting a dedicated circulation study for North Central for several years, and this was really a tremendous step forward to be able to move this item along in parallel with the citywide Complete Streets Plan. And I was very happy to see the council support the community in this effort. I didn't, however, see that there was some concern or some questions raised about specifically the study around safety. And so, I was wondering, is Azelia still here?
Yes.
Hi, Azelia. Okay. So, I think that there's, you know, a big part of the impetus of looking at the Complete Streets Plan and analysis dedicated for North Central was in strong consideration for the fact that North Central has one of the highest collision rates in the city and the highest environmental pollution burden, the highest rate of poverty, and many legacy challenges from redlining. And so, safety is top of mind, and I was wondering specifically how our Complete Streets Plan is intending to address safety in this contract and analysis?
Sure, I will do my best in answering this question. We have a lot of data, underlying data, that will be used for the analysis. As you, it's part of the study session, for example, we talked about the high level of collisions in some areas. So, part of that effort is to analyze problem areas and to address the challenges there as it relates to how do you address the safety issues with the Complete Streets model. So, part of that circulation piece and addressing the, analyzing the existing dataset as it relates to collisions will be evaluated under that Complete Streets umbrella. I will also remind council that in parallel, we are also working on our local roadway safety plan, which takes a much more detailed and focused assessment on the types of collisions that happen throughout the city. And part of that effort will also be to propose potential remedies. So, not only do we now have a very specific North Central study under the citywide Complete Streets, but we also have a very focused local roadway safety plan evaluation underway as well. So, all those will fold together so that we can develop a plan that addresses pedestrian and vehicle safety in North Central.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First of all, I'd like to ask for, I have four members on the virtual meeting with their hands raised. Right now, we are taking public comment for item number four on the consent calendar. If you are not intending to comment on item number four on the consent calendar, can you please?
Right now, we are taking public comment for item number four on the consent calendar. If you are not intending to comment on item number four on the consent calendar, can you please lower your hand? If you are intending to, please leave your hand raised. And if there's another member of the consent calendar or public comment or another item on the agenda, we'll ask you to raise your hand at the appropriate time. So first in-person commenter is Seema Patel.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. I am a planning commissioner for the city of San Mateo, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I read the packet for this item, and I also noticed that the word "safety" does not appear anywhere in the SOW for the consultant. And I agree that safety should be a top, if not the top, priority of this effort. And so I was wondering if the goals of the community listening sessions could be revised to state the listening sessions will focus on understanding community members' experiences and needs related to safety, transportation, circulation, and access. It would also be great if this SOW could include an analysis of collisions in North Central. And given that North Central is historically underrepresented and an equity priority area, it would be great if the SOW could include an analysis of environmental concerns, including noise and air pollution. Lastly, the SOW mentions pop-ups and walking tours, and I think a bike tour would also help in establishing a complete understanding of the current infrastructure and safety challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three remote speakers. The first one is Mike Swire. Please go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Patrice, and thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of the council. I rise tonight to ask the council to clarify the intent and scope of the, quote, "complete streets" study for the North Central neighborhood. After watching the previous council meeting and reading the proposed consulting agreement for the study, I am not certain as to the objectives of the project. Without clear objectives, the project will likely fail. I agree that we can do a much better job making North Central safer for those who walk, bike, and take transit. Per the city's data and the earlier discussion on the popular interchange, these are the most dangerous and highest injury-risk streets in the city, especially for pedestrians and kids getting to school on foot and bike. Nevertheless, the project's Schedule A or Scope of Services does not clearly identify the reason for and the focus of the study. Most, quote, "complete streets" projects are consistent with the first sentence in a recent San Jose Complete Street Study. It says, "The San Jose Complete Street Study is the culmination of a community-based planning process, quote, 'to remove the safe," or "to improve the safety, attractiveness, and efficiency of public transit, walking, and bicycling in the corridor while continuing to serve the needs of drivers.'" I.e., the study's focus is on filling the gaps left by 100-plus years of prioritizing the convenience of those who drive over the safety needs of those who walk, bike, and take transit. Nevertheless, in the proposed study, I could seldom find the word "safety" in the scope of work. There was no mention of the needs of those who bike. There's no proposal to actually bike through the neighborhood to see how safe it is. There's no mention of equity, especially for those who are unable to afford the cost of an automobile. Keep in mind that the average cost of a new car in the U.S. is now roughly $45,000, and the operating cost is $10,000 a year. Anecdotally, a majority of those who regularly commute via bike in this area are not higher median income. The needs and safeties of these people are a higher priority than the needs of those who are asking for the city to provide them with free car storage on public streets. If, however, as stated in the previous council meeting, the primary goal of the study is to eliminate the one-year-old bike lanes next to San Mateo High and College Park Elementary Schools, let's be honest about it, there's no need to spend $250,000 of precious city general funds on yet another transportation study when so many safety projects had already been identified and sit in purgatory in the pedestrian master plan, the bike master plan, the transit master plan, the local roadway safety plan, while waiting for funding to materialize. If, however, the project is truly about completing the streets in this area, let's ditch the study and simply get started adding speeding humps, narrowing streets, and installing modal filters. These actions will certainly make the streets more, quote, "complete" than simply getting rid of the new bike lanes to increase the supply of free parking on public streets. Thank you for truly completing the streets around our schools. Our kids' lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hunt. Please go ahead, David.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for taking my comments again. Just to echo the previous two commenters, safety should definitely be the top priority in this study. As others have said, North Central has one of the highest collision rates in the city. And in my experience, biking and walking around San Mateo, including in North Central, more cars, more parking, and more traffic is not safer. This needs to be kept in mind when considering complete streets, and the goals should be updated as the previous two commenters recommended. They said it better than I will attempt. But including the analysis of collisions and the addition of a bike audit, as well as the safety recommendations, is important. I will add that, as was previously discussed, the CKG Youth-Based High-Entry Network touches on a number of streets in North Central, and we're adding a new school in that neighborhood in the near future, where that will add hundreds of new students. If we don't provide alternatives for those students to safely get to and from school other than cars, there's going to be hundreds more cars on the streets every day, which will cause more pollution, more safety concerns, more collisions, and I think inevitably more injuries of students getting to and from schools in that neighborhood. I think focusing on complete streets can be a huge step forward for San Mateo. This is exciting to see the renewed focus. We have to get the goals right. And I really think that explicitly including topics about the new school being added and how that'll impact the neighborhood and how we get people in and out of the neighborhood safely would be a really good step in the right direction. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Sean Lacson, and our final speaker will be Ryan Monteschimi.
Good evening, city council. My name is Sean Lacson. I just wanted to echo the previous commenter's statements that the Complete Streets circulation study being done in North Central should prioritize and have written as a priority a safety first and foremost as a goal for the circulation study. I also want to echo previous comments stating that car-dependent infrastructure is absolutely an equity issue. And as our city council has mentioned numerous times, the North Central neighborhood is a historically unequitable neighborhood in the way that it's been treated in the past by policies set by previous city governments. Car dependency is a cost that has to be shouldered by the person owning the car, which means that lower-income folks in places like North Central have to spend more share of their own income in order to do basic life services like going to the grocery store or going to work. So I encourage the city council to add not only safety as a priority for the circulate equity, you know, better access outside of automobile infrastructure via pedestrian, bicycling, scootering, whatever you want to call it, or transit through our North Central neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Ryan Monteschimi.
Good evening, council. Honorable Mayor Lee, thank you for the opportunity to address on this item. Just wanted to say that regarding a study, a suggestion for the consultant and the council to consider is the development of a parking permit program in the city. I just want to point out that while the bike lanes were agreed to last year on Humboldt Street, there was discussion and commitment by the city to explore options for a residential parking permit program. I just want to acknowledge that, to my knowledge, at this point, that commitment has yet to be met. And parking is a real issue in the neighborhood in addition to bike safety. A study should look at effective parking management solutions, which are the ultimate solution to parking issues, is how you manage parking on the street. So I just want to, I thank the mayor for working to identify additional study opportunities for this neighborhood that has long had equitable planning issues. And encourage us to not lose sight of all the commitments that were made when the bike lanes were passed last year, which includes the development of the residential parking permit program. Thank you. And I view this study as being one potential avenue to develop such a program. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last speaker.
Thank you. So I heard some really important questions and I think feedback in how we're defining this analysis. And I think, Azelia, it would be helpful for you to clarify what, you know, some of the definitions that we're using. I mean, from my perspective, the benefit of taking a complete streets approach is that we're really taking a comprehensive view that layers some of our disjointed master plans and area-specific plans that haven't been married. And looking at, for example, pedestrian safety, looking at our tree story and our, you know, their shade canopy and our drainage and the circulation, which is, you know, which is obviously all connected to our Vision Zero plan to completely eliminate avoidable collisions that cause bodily and property damage, bodily harm and property damage. And so it would, I think, help us to understand, are some of these issues baked into the analysis and it just more implicit? Or is this something that we need to make more explicit? Because, you know, this is something that a lot of us have been working really hard for in terms of getting the level of dedicated resources and analysis for North Central. And we want to make sure that that happens right the first time. So if you could just elaborate a little bit more in terms of what exactly are we talking about that is covered or maybe not covered that might deserve further discussion?
Sure, I think we can definitely, you know, part of the action here in terms of consent is approving this item. I will note that this effort in parallel with the citywide Complete Streets takes into consideration previous plans, like the bicycle master plan, which has a huge safety component. It takes into account the pedestrian master plan, which also proposes streetscapes that address safety. One of the big efforts with what is presented to you on the scope is really working with the community to identify those goals. And I won't, well, and I just will be then very specific in pointing to you all that the part of the scope involves having, interviewing, and working with community members on that lived experience. And to task, I will just read this out, Task 3.2. This proposes to identify community needs using a variety of data sources, both qualitative, meaning the lived experience of community members, as well as quantitative, for example, using collision data, traffic volume, and speed to support and lift up the community identified needs. So I think that statement captures what some of the commenters raised as it relates to safety, really working with the community to identify those goals and to base this plan specific to the community as part of the overall citywide effort to address safety, which a lot of our previous plans have focused on as well.
Any other questions from council? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve consent calendar item number four.
Second, madam clerk?
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great. So that brings us to our last polled item.
Sure, that would be me. I pulled item six, not because I don't think that we should approve it, but because there were questions from the public regarding why we were deviating from buying either hybrid or electric vehicles. And in talking with Drew Corbett, who I'm going to put on the spot now, Drew said that it wasn't that we didn't intend or start with the intention of buying hybrid vehicles, it's that hybrid vehicles have been on back order due to the pandemic for over a year and a half, and they're giving us a timeline of, what, another year and a half before seeing hybrids return to market?
That'd be, I think, best case. So just for some additional context, the police department has a total fleet of 83 vehicles. We have nine hybrids in the fleet. We had intended on, we usually buy them in, you know, groups of about nine or so. So we purchased nine. We've got most of them being outfitted right now. I think we have a couple on the street. We had another nine that were up for replacement. Actually, last October, council approved the purchase of those nine replacements, and those were hybrids. We've continued to delay, as you note. There's been delays from the manufacturer. They've been having trouble with the engines and batteries on the hybrids. At this point, at best, we would be able to order in early 2024, and there's a six-to-eighth month lead time from there. And then you've got another two to three months to outfit. So we would be looking at, you know, at least 18 months from now to get those. And the vehicles that need replacement have needed replacement since a while back. And we, you know, we're very clear on council's priority to move to a green fleet. We would not be bringing this forward if we didn't think it were an absolute necessity. We do think this is an aberration, and by the time that we go out for our next batch of vehicles, we will be looking to go with hybrid vehicles or potentially electric.
Thank you, Drew, for clarifying. I just wanted to make sure the public were aware that we weren't going back on what we had committed to. And with that, I make a motion to approve item six.
Well, before you do, I have one more follow-up question, just for clarification for the public. The life cycle of our replacement is around five years, is that right?
Yeah, for the police vehicles, particularly for patrol vehicles, it is approximately five years. These vehicles that are being replaced are running up on eight, being eight years old.
Thank you. And just, so if we stay on track with our goal of achieving a green fleet by 2030, is that right, 2030, then in all likelihood, we will need to do a purchase again for these vehicles that we're purchasing in this next fiscal year.
That's correct. I would expect for this batch of vehicles, the next replacement to be hybrid or electric.
Okay, so we're not deviating from the goal of achieving a green fleet for our PD fleet by 2030 in this decision point?
Correct.
Thank you. Can we open this up for a public comment, please?
Yes, we can. I don't have any speaker slips on this item. If there's any member in our virtual environment who would like to comment on item number six, please raise your hand now. I'll give you a couple of moments to do that. I have no hands raised virtually, and I have no speaker slips for in-person.
I'll now make a motion. Sorry to jump the gun. I'll now make a motion to put six back onto the consent calendar.
Item number six was already taken off the consent calendar. Consent calendar was voted on.
Sorry, thank you.
So I think the motion is just to improve the staff recommendation for item six, I think.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And I have one follow-up item. I do have a yellow request to speak for item number two, which we announced for public comment, and we didn't have any, from Jean Dale. Did Jean Dale wish to comment on item number two?
No.
Okay, thank you. Public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so we are done with the consent calendar. Great. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. Please remember that state law prevents the council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three in-person speaker slips for public comment for items not on the agenda. If you intend to comment on items not on the agenda, please give me your speaker slip right now. And if you intend to comment from the remote environment, I have one hand raised. Please raise your hand now. Okay, we have four public comment. So if I could please call for Tasso Sografis. So if I could please call forward Tasso Zagrafos. Following Tasso will be Alan Matlich and then Frank Markowitz. If you could go ahead and line up so we can move through this expeditiously, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is Tasso Zagrafos. I'm a longtime resident of San Mateo. I first want to recognize the honorable mayors here today. Mayor Mayor Claire Mack, Carol Groom, Jack Matthews, Eric Rodriguez, and Jerry Hill. Thank you for your many years of service to this city. The city of San Mateo received over $2 million of federal grant monies that was used to replace parking meters with license plate pay stations in the downtown area. The project also included the installation of parking wayfinding technology and digital signage that is supposed to help drivers quickly locate available parking spaces. That is when it works. The objective is to reduce harmful emissions caused by cars circling around looking for parking. On a previous consent calendar, the council approved additional funds to the performing vendor's contract. I asked the city to follow up with staff to ensure the vendor performs in meeting service-level requirements of uptime and accuracy. If you're at the central garage, the digital sign has been at 51 since December 12, 2022. While I am encouraged by the later specific agenda item addressing the specific conduct of a specific city official's actions and behaviors, my next comment is not about that agenda item. I would like to raise my concern about a greater systemic problem of malevolent and unfaithful public servitude. I believe we have a problem that is far greater and deeper than what is singularly being addressed here tonight. For that reason, I have submitted a formal request to the San Mateo County for a civil grand jury to investigate this greater and deeper systemic concern. In addition, I'm in touch with and also submitting a formal request with the California Attorney General's Office and the Department of Justice. As we do not have an ethics committee or ethical oversight body, these higher authorities can offer a much-needed confidence of impartiality. They have the capabilities, resources, and tools to fully capture, review, and assess both government and private entity communications that include social media posts and interactions on platforms such as Slack. Recorded video of tonight's proceedings and that of prior meetings by elected and appointed officials, for example, that of city planning commissioners are to become evidentiary artifacts. The test of scrutiny is just beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call up the next speaker, I have two hands raised in the remote environment. I am closing the remote environment public comment period, so we'll have Catherine and Rayanne from in there on items not on the agenda, or maybe not. So next in person is Alan Matlich, followed by Frank Markowitz.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Alan Matlich. I'd like to speak to you about our housing shortage. I live in north-central the neighborhood of San Mateo, a few blocks from Martin Luther King Park. I enjoy walking the neighborhood. It's a vibrant neighborhood with friendly people, walking their dogs, gathering with friends for parties in front yards, and playing soccer and basketball in the park. I also enjoy walking up through the Baywood-Aragon neighborhood to admire the gorgeous homes and the beautifully landscaped and manicured lawns. My destination is the St. John's Cemetery, where from a certain spot, you can get a fantastic view of San Francisco. The difference between these neighborhoods recently caused me to look at data regarding income and wealth in San Mateo County. According to the Federal Reserve, the average income of the highest-earning 20% of households in our county is more than 17 times the average income of lowest-earning 20%. The Gini Index, which measures wealth disparity, puts San Mateo County on par with countries like Burkina Faso, Honduras, and Guatemala. Like these countries, wealth in San Mateo County is unusually concentrated in the hands of a relatively few, while many others struggle to make ends meet. I think this goes a long way toward explaining the sharp disagreements about housing policy in San Mateo County and its cities. As well-intentioned as people wealthy enough to enjoy housing security might be, I doubt they in general can truly understand what it is to pay more than 50% of one's relatively low income for crowded and sometimes substandard housing, which is what roughly 18% of households in San Mateo County must pay. Forgive me. This cost burden is the predictable consequence of an intentionally and artificially constrained housing supply. Our previous council made progress in bringing much-needed housing to our city. I'd like to thank Mayor Lee, and in particular, for the fine work she has done in this regard. She brings an invaluable perspective to the council. My hope is that you will join Mayor Lee now in the coming years to bring more housing to our city. Thank you, Mayor Lee, for your diligent service to our city, and thank you, council members.
Okay, our last speaker is Frank Markowitz.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and council members. I'm Frank Markowitz, a resident of the Beresford-Hillsdale area, homeowner and member of the Beresford-Hillsdale Neighborhood Association. Since I did not have the chance to attend the April 17 meeting, but wanted to speak on the response to the HCD letter and the housing element and housing policy generally, I wanted to just briefly thank the council, offer my support for your efforts to respond in good faith and try to meet the spirit of the HCD comments to help with the critical need for additional affordable housing and mid-level housing in San Mateo. And I realize that the process, as far as the HCD response, is ongoing, but I hope that in future actions, you will support the policies like the aggressive consideration of additional public and quasi-public sites for affordable housing, reduced parking standards, and bringing alternative or liberalized version of Measure Y to the ballot in 2024 with a program of public education to understand the needs for changes to the Measure Y policies, but also to have a Plan B in case Measure Y cannot be liberalized by the voters. I'd support programs generally for affordable housing. And finally, I think that you recognize that the jobs housing balance, or the jobs housing imbalance that we have that we need to address, that the jobs portion is also very important, and we need to look at limiting the growth of employment to retain that balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do have one remote speaker. I scared everyone else off. So, Rayanne Motashemi, please go ahead.
Good evening, council. Rayanne Motashemi, I just wanted to reiterate part of a comment that I had previously made, but I just want to focus on just making this point that parking permit programs that were committed to study the development of those programs in agreements laid and votes taken last year should be pursued and developed to manage parking situations. We've seen how parking management can work in places like downtown, and I believe that there is a case to be made for developing residential parking permit programs in other neighborhoods that see high parking demand. I don't think we should lose sight of this goal. And I think that this and many other issues that are pertinent to everyday lives of San Mateans should be prioritized over needless distractions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no other speakers.
Thank you so much. I did hear, I think, a relevant question that might deserve an update about the residential permit parking program pilot that was part of the mitigation efforts promised to North Central. And I was wondering if, Azalia, did you have any updates you could provide on the timeline for implementation?
Sure, yes. So as part of the scope of work that was approved for the North Central study, it includes parking policy, a review of parking policies. And we do have data that was collected through the survey effort that we conducted last year, so that will fold into the North Central assessment as well, which is included in the scope of work.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Before we get into new business, I'd like to ask our city clerk to please remind us of the rules of decorum in council meetings. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So, welcome. You're in the formal public meeting process. We have a motto we use here in the city of San Mateo, which is "Get respect, give respect." And so we try and create an environment where everyone is welcome to comment. All opinions are heard, and we want to hear from all of you. So what that means is we ask you to refrain from clapping, cheering, jeering, booing, any kind of emotional reaction to a commenter. What this does is it has a chilling effect on someone who has a different opinion or a point of view, and it may keep them from coming forward and giving their opinion. And we really want to hear from everybody. So I will ask you to please respect that and just know we do it in the spirit of all opinions are welcome, and we want to hear from everyone who's here in the room to give their comments. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll start new business. Item number seven, city attorney report, or sorry, district attorney report on allegations of Brown Act violations and vote trading conduct, code of conduct for the city council and city boards and commissions. We have a presentation from our city attorney, Prasanna Masai.
Yes, good evening. I have a brief presentation. I will make it short and later the anticipated public comments. Next slide, please. So on this slide, you'll just see the three items that are going to be addressed as part of this council item. I also want to remind both council and the public, there's no council action tonight. There's no voting. There's simply a discussion of the district attorney's report and direction to staff. Next slide, please. So with the district attorney's report, after the council meetings in December of last year, if you all will recall, we had three meetings, on the 5th, the 7th, and the 12th. During the council meetings of December 7th and the 12th, the mayor made certain allegations relating to the Brown Act and other improper conduct, you know, following that meeting and looking into it. I was unable to ascertain who had contacted the mayor, and then at that point, I referred the matter to the district attorney's office shortly after the December 12 meeting by a letter dated December 13. And then, once more recently, the district attorney issued a report, both a summary that I attached to tonight's council item and also a more detailed report. And in that report, the district attorney made sort of a couple of general determinations. One, his office found that there was no basis to conclude that there was a violation of the Brown Act, or, and then also found there was no basis to conclude that there was any quid pro quo or vote trading. The DA in his report determined that the discussion of potential political outcomes in the course of these December meetings was not a violation of any criminal statute. So then after that report came out, the council asked that this report be agendized, which it has been for tonight's meeting, for discussion by the council. Next slide, please. So also, at the last council meeting, the council asked to be on this agenda, discussion of codes of conduct, and the idea of establishing codes of conduct for the city council and also for boards and commissions. So attached to my very brief council report are our existing council guidelines and also our existing rules and procedures for our boards and commissions. And in those documents, there are currently codes of conduct. And I'll discuss what's on the slide. There are kind of a lot of words on the slide, but they're important, so I'll go through them slowly. For the council guidelines, there are no penalties. It's more on the honor system. It's more an idea that this is the standard that the council has chosen to set for itself, the standard of professionalism and a standard of respectful conduct amongst each other and also to staff and the public. For the board and commission rules and procedures, it states at the beginning that violation of those could be grounds for removal. And although it doesn't say it, any removal of a member of a board or commission would be pursuant to the city charter, which requires a vote of a majority plus one, four votes, to remove a commissioner. So with that, I can go over these overarching principles and the rules of conduct for the city council and for members of boards and commissions. They're not exactly the same, but they have a lot of similarities. One is certainly in the council guidelines to put constituents first at all times. And then the other two are related in civil, intelligent public discourse and enhancing public participation and debate at the city council level and also amongst, you know, when a board or commission discusses an item that's before them. And then also, there's this principle, as I said before, of treating each other, meaning the members of the city council treating each other with dignity, courtesy, and respect. And that also goes for our other legislative bodies, our other boards and commissions. When they sit and they meet and discuss, there's this principle about treating each other, staff and the public, with, again, dignity, courtesy, and respect. And as part of that, it's agreeing to respectfully disagree. And I think to make for efficient meetings, the last bullet point is also important, to keep comments clear, concise, and on topic in order to have a focused discussion for whatever the agenda item is, whether it's for the council or city board or commission, and so that it can conduct its business as originally intended. Next slide, please. Okay, so you'll notice this slide is mostly blank. The reason is because it's really, it's really up to the council to determine options for a future council meeting, to provide direction. So, you know, you'll see there's a column for short-term options and a column for long-term options. I will mention a few, a couple of principles to keep in mind. One is that the council cannot expel one of its members, right? I mean, the city council members are answerable to the voters. Another principle is that, you know, as you consider options for the short term, or really this is more for the long term, that when you create new rules, they should apply prospectively. And also, as you think about, for example, under what circumstances should a member of a legislative body forfeit their office? So the city charter governs forfeiture, two different sections, for the city council and for boards and commissions. So any change to those grounds for forfeiting office would really require a charter amendment. So that's not really something within the power of the council to do. It would require, the council could put a ballot measure on, but it would require voter approval ultimately. And then, I'll make one last point before turning it back over to the council, and that is, you can treat this slide sort of however you wish. If you want to each add your own item for discussion, it's up to you. I would suggest that perhaps for some efficiency, that if by consensus you want to that if by consensus you want to add an item to one of these columns, and then have something to look at as you discuss it, or at least have three kind of heads nodding and saying, "Yeah, no, I think that's something worth discussing," that might make for a more efficient discussion. You don't have to do that. It's really up to you. There's kind of like a virtual chalkboard for you to use as you see fit. You don't need to use it at all if you don't want to, but it's just something you can use if you so choose. That's the end of my presentation. I'll turn it back over to the council.
Thank you, city attorney. Questions from council?
If I may, Mayor? City attorney, I just had a couple of clarifying questions. My first question you just answered, confirming that this council cannot remove any council member and that only the voters can do so.
Well, vote, correct. I mean, vote, whether it's during a recall process or more typically at elections, that's when the voters speak.
Right, great. And then, number two, is a formal censure of the mayor an option for us at this point?
No, it's not, because we have no censure procedure. I mean, you can only, in my view, censure somebody, you know, when you have a process in place to do so. And since you don't have a process in place, and in the council guidelines or otherwise, a censure is not an option for the council.
Thank you. I think that's an important thing to understand. Number three, is there anything in our charter or municipal code that limits any rules or procedures that a majority of council votes to put in the codes of conduct for the council and/or the boards and commissions?
The main thing that comes to mind is what I've already stated. There are two different sections of the charter that are cited in the very brief staff report that relate to when a council member would forfeit their office, or when a member of a board or commission would be, could be removed from office by the council. But in that very same section, it has similar grounds for forfeiture. So in that, that would be a kind of a guardrail, or you wouldn't be able to change that or go beyond that in creating some new rule. You would be bound by the charter.
Thank you. And then, just a clarification from me, is it true that anything we put in the council code of conduct, as long as it's applicable, it's replicated in the codes of conduct for the boards and commissions from a streamlining perspective?
I think that would certainly make sense. That's kind of the idea, is like the rules and procedures for boards and commissions and the guidelines for council members, there's a lot of similarities. They're not the same, because the council is different, of course. But just depending on what, if you chose to create a rule, depending on what that new rule was, it could very well go into two different places.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Other council questions?
Thank you, through the mayor. Prasanna, could you elaborate a little bit on the difference between the short-term options and long-term options? Like what?
Well, I think there's been some kind of discussion, sort of in the community, from what I understand, about what can you do in the short term? You know, what could you do now? So I just put, I don't have anything particular in mind, but that column really is to kind of aid the council discussion. So I don't know if that really answers your question, but a long-term option might be a change, if you want to make a change, to the council guidelines or procedures for boards and commissions.
Okay, right. So short-term options are more about what might we wish to do during this meeting and potentially going forward. But long-term options are related to making changes, perhaps to council guidelines, future-looking things that would include another study session, so on and so forth.
No, that's right. I mean, again, just a reminder, there's no council voting tonight. This is just direction to staff. So a short-term option could be to, I don't know what that might be, but maybe in the next, you know, whether it's next council meeting or two or something in the near future, to bring something back. That's up for the council to kind of discuss, deliberate on after taking public comment. But, and then depending on what that is, then I can provide some guidance along with city manager, city clerk, and others, as to the viability of whatever the council comes up with.
Thank you. No further questions.
I wanted to ask, may I go?
Yes, please.
I wanted to ask some questions about the code of conduct that we've been discussing, which I assume would be one of the long-term options, to set up a code of conduct. But what would be the best way to adjudicate that code of conduct? If we have a code and it's firmly ensconced in the city charter and it's violated, how do we prosecute it? Maybe that's too strong a word. Do we do it through the city council, through discussion here, or do we do it by setting up a governance board of some kind to look at it?
You know, it wouldn't be a governance board, because the city council, you know, is the governing body of the city. And, you know, I wouldn't use the word prosecute, for example, but, you know...
But you got my attention.
I got your intention, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think, you know, in terms of how, like, any violation of, I say, if the council chose to create some more teeth in the council guidelines, I think you're asking, how would that work? Who would make a decision on whether those rules, you know, have been violated? I think most typically, it would be the city council itself that would make that kind of determination. But again, I think it depends also on what the council had in mind as far as the rule is concerned. But I think most likely, it would be the city council itself making that determination.
I probably wouldn't be in favor of any kind of an outside agency doing it. The city council would be okay with me, or I would be okay with setting up a board or a commission here in the city to do it as well. I mean, I'm willing to look at options. I actually have one more. So if we were determined tonight that something needed to be done because of what happened on the 12th, would one of the options maybe be a letter from the city council to the mayor?
A letter to the mayor? Well, the city, so all of you, when you were elected or appointed to office, all of you have First Amendment rights. And, you know, you have the ability to express your own opinion. You know, while on the one hand, you know, I wouldn't recommend, for the reason I mentioned, you know, that the censure isn't an option, because you don't have any kind of process for that. But if you were to create some kind of document, some sort of expression of opinion, you know, of the council, I mean, I think that's something that you could potentially do. I would want to hear more about exactly what you had in mind. But that, if it's simply an expression of opinion and not something sort of punitive or punishing in nature, or intended to be that way, then that could be something within the authority of the council today, not at today's meeting, but at a future meeting.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not talking about anything punitive. That's it for me, for now.
I have no additional questions. Thank you, for now.
I guess I'd like to learn more about, if we don't mind returning to the council guidelines slide. So I appreciate Councilmember Hedges' line of questioning in terms of, you know, who determines that a principle might be violated, for example? How is that elevated? How is that decided? And then, you know, I guess what happens?
Well, right, you would have to, the council, I think that would be the subject of a future meeting, to talk about the mechanics of all of that. You know, who would make that sort of additional determination that it's possible that a rule was violated? And then, what happens next? Who brings that to the attention of the council? And how does that all work? If the council wanted to go down that path, then we need to, we would need to look at, so this would be primarily me, would need to look at, you know, how this has worked in practice and in other jurisdictions, do additional legal research, and then present that to the council at a future meeting.
If I could ask our city historian, have you ever experienced any such code of conduct evaluation in the 16 years you've been with us? Is that right?
Close to 12, but thank you.
Okay. I gave you an extra four. If you have any insights to glean in terms of the history of how the city has treated the, you know, code of conduct and assessed it, that would be very helpful for this conversation.
I think the fact that we have a code of conduct inside the, excuse me, the city council guidelines and in the board and commission document is in 2015. We took what were a few individual resolutions on how council comports themselves, and we realized we had a problem with all the different commissions acting in different ways. And so council took action. We made a proposal. We queried what other cities did, and we looked at one document to reference, so it would be easier, easier to find, a little bit more comprehensive. And so we proposed, we took those four or five resolutions that were about how you conduct your meetings. And then we proposed language we lifted from other cities, and we proposed removing the bylaws from all the boards and commissions and instead using the council rules and procedures for all commissions. Council rules and procedures were based on the city council guidelines, and council did, by resolution, adopt the city council guidelines and the board and commission rules and procedures. Those were based on what we saw at some other cities. So to my way of remembering, and I'll ask the city manager to weigh in, I don't believe we've ever, since 2015, adjusted anything in the codes of conduct. We have in many, many other areas. I think we've taken it back to council for some updates, maybe five or six times.
Thank you. And just to clarify again, what I heard from you, Prasanna, our city attorney, is that even if we were to go down a path of creating some sort of mechanism for evaluation and potentially censure process, that would be applied prospectively and not retrospectively?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess I'm just kind of curious for, you know, for the sake of going down this thought process, you know, what is to stop a council, for example, from determining that, you know, a dress that somebody is wearing or a picture that someone has taken is a sign of disrespect?
I'm not quite following the question.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, you know, in the last council meeting, I was accused of disrespecting the community by wearing a dress, this dress, actually, that has skyscrapers on it. And so I'm just, you know, I think that, you know, as we explore this idea, there is a possibility of it being exploited as a form of harassment.
Well, let me just add, like, when I mentioned the First Amendment previously, any kind of future-facing prospective rule that's created, you know, would have to be carefully written, and it also could not, should not be used against somebody for that person's exercise of their First Amendment rights. So if somebody engages in expressive conduct, wears, wearing a dress, t-shirt, whatever, it might be a hat, we would need to be very careful to not employ a process to punish somebody for that person engaging in expressive conduct. And I think that's where we, you know, me as the city attorney and us as staff, would help guide the council and steer the council away from that. Because, you know, in the heat of the moment, sometimes emotions can run high. And then I think we can help at least guide the council, future councils, sort of away from actions that could run afoul of that kind of principle.
Thank you. And so there is, you know, there is a case recently, I believe it's in Los Galtos, that where a censor, censure process was undertaken, and then the ACLU got involved. Are you familiar with that case at all?
Just secondhand. You know, I did hear about it. I think the council there had censured a commissioner for making certain comments, and then afterwards rescinded the censure because there was a determination made that this person was engaged in expressive activity and therefore is appropriate to rescind the censure. This is just what I understand from just media reports, nothing more.
Thank you. That's helpful. Okay, any other questions? Great. Then I think we're ready to open it up for a public comment.
Okay, so thank you. A couple of things about public comment. If you have not turned in your speaker slip, you have about three minutes to do it in the chamber. Please raise your hand in the remote environment if you plan on speaking to this item. I want you to explain that with the city council rules and procedures, we do have a unique opportunity where we allow for an organized presentation from a group, a bona fide group of citizens to do an organized presentation in lieu of other speakers, other people speaking. So we do have outreach from two different groups who invoke that. It's usually 15 minutes. In light of the number of speakers we have here tonight, we've asked them to reduce that to between no more than six to 10 minutes. And so we do have two organized presentations we're going to take first. And I will let you know that at this time, we have 46 speakers here in the audience. And please continue to raise your hands online if you intend to speak on this item. And so we do take these in the order received. So it looks like we're about 50 in person, and I now have 10 in the remote environment. So I will call up the first organized presentation. We'll set the timer to 10 minutes. And that is going to be Ethics San Mateo, Randy Heater. He's speaking on behalf of an organized presentation. At the end of his presentation, if your hand is not up, or the, I do not have your speaker slip, we will be cutting off who we will be taking public comment from at that time, okay? And one moment, we'll set that up for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lee and council members. My name is Randy Heater. I'm a 35-year resident of San Mateo and a native of the peninsula. I'm a board member of Ethics San Mateo, and I'm representing some of the members of Ethics San Mateo with this presentation. You know, it's great that the city's attorney presentation and your previous discussion actually is a great prelude to what I'm going to be talking about. Next slide, please. October 19th, 2022, Ethics San Mateo was founded. That was Global Ethics Day. Our mission is to lead and support efforts by the residents of San Mateo to ensure our city is served by our elected and appointed officials according to the highest level of ethics standards and behavior. We're here tonight to present in a collaborative spirit with the goal of assisting our city leadership in establishing procedures to ensure integrity and truth at all levels of government. Next slide, please. So the focus tonight is to ask the city to establish clear and comprehensive standards for ethical behavior and conduct, methods to support, monitor, and enforce this behavior, basically codifying accountability, and then to apply basically codifying accountability, and then to apply these standards to all of city governments, city council, boards and commissions. Process is going to take months. Next slide, please. So the recommendations we have on what to do, there are several. Research and review the city's current rules and standards regarding ethical standards and behavior. Study what other cities are doing in California regarding this. Determine which models are considered to be the most successful in standard-setting, compliance monitoring, and enforcement methods. Recommend which model would work most effectively in San Mateo, and possibly engage a third-party consulting organization to assist with the development of these standards and the accountability and enforcement methods. Meanwhile, while this is happening, please resolve to enforce the current rules and conduct city business according to the highest level of ethical behavior. Once these new standards are in place, the city council would then approve that they be implemented across city government. Next slide, please. So the roadmap, one way to achieve this might be to, well, designate a member of the city's staff to oversee and manage the efforts, but also use the city's internship program to engage a graduate student or advanced undergraduate in the relevant, uh, field of study to do, for example, these four, four from the previous slide. Tell us what other cities in California are doing, tell us what we've done in the past, recommend a model, and maybe identify some consultants that can assist with the detailed development of this. Next slide, please. The good news is there are a lot of resources the city and the staff can work from. Just a simple search on the web results in, for example, these two. The California Institute for Local Governments. This is a great outfit, it's a great website to go study. Uh, they have a number of training courses on ethics, they have a number of webinars on ethics, uh, topics. For example, just last June, Leading Locals: Civility in Local Governments, Strategies to Improve Civil Discourse in Public Meetings. It happens elsewhere too, so. Number two, Tips to Promote an Ethical and Transparent Culture. Another one, Abstentions and Disqualifications: Conflicts of Interest. Another great resource, just down the street, University of Santa Clara, the Markelus Center for Applied Ethics. So Santa Clara was in 1999 and 2000 looking to enhance their code of conduct and establish greater accountability to their, uh, elected officials and appointed, um, members. So they engaged the Markelus Center, and the Markelus Center came up with, uh, a code of ethics and values. There are eight detailed codes of ethics and values. Now compare this, this is several pages, to, if, do the search in San Mateo, this is what we get. And a lot of these were in the city attorney's presentation, nine bullet points. If you look at the boards and commissions, the same nine bullet points plus five more. But it's, it's fairly light in describing what these codes of conduct are, how they should be applied. May want to take a look at some of these other examples for that. Um, for example, I also went to the city of San Mateo's website and began to type in some search words. Admonition. No search results available. Did you mean ammunition? Censure. No search results available. Did you mean closure? Century? So the city attorney is right, we do not have a good detailed list of how to address ethics violations in our own San Mateo code. Okay, next slide, please. The Institute of Local Governments also has examples of codes of conduct for a number of California cities. It's on their website. So that's another good resource that could be used to help strengthen San Mateo's. Next slide, please. If you break this into three major steps, it might look something like this. Phase one could be the initial research, three months. This is the work that that intern could be doing. Those four tasks I outlined a couple slides, three slides ago. Phase two, this is where it gets more detailed, where the development of ethics standards, codes, and enforcement, uh, is performed, and that's potentially six months, who knows? Phase three, discussion and adoption of the final ethics standards and codes, three months. The point is, this can be done in the course of a year if you establish that kind of a target timeline. Next slide, please. So the next step is for the city council to decide whether or not to initiate this type of a project, and then commit to moving forward with staff recommendations if they're found to likely succeed. And should this not go forward, I think the city council needs to resolve to enforce the current code of conduct, add enforceable consequences, and commit to perform city business according to the highest levels of ethical behavior. Next slide, please. So thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I think this is a relevant topic right now in the midst of everything that's happening. Um, now's the time to reassert your commitment to serving the residents of San Mateo in the San Mateo Way. To remind everybody, the San Mateo Way is generally characterized by civility, cooperation, collegiality, honesty, and integrity, even amidst disagreement. So establishing a new, clear code of conduct and ethics standards along with clear enforcement protocols will help strengthen San Mateo's ability to find their way back to the San Mateo Way. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. As mentioned previously, if I, either we are closed for in, um, the room public comment, we have 47 speakers inside the room. Um, online, uh, we are closing the virtual, uh, desire to speak. We have 14 speakers online. The first one will be Stephanie Reyes, and Brian Kay from the Peninsula DSA will be our last speaker, um, in that current environment. So next, we go to our other organized presentation, and I do want to say that according to our rules, um, if we have over 21 speakers, we do one minute for individual speakers, so we will be with council's concurrence invoking the one minute for individual speakers. We do have one more organized presentation.
I would recommend that, given the fact that there are so many speakers and it's quite an important topic that we allow to, and it's, what does everyone think?
I would just ask this council to please commit to a framework that can be applied uniformly. Uh, I feel like we find ourselves in this situation often, and in some cases, exceptions are made, and I would prefer that we pick a framework and stick to it.
In an effort to, uh, get done, or get, get everyone talking, um, I would say that we will then go with a one, as that is our standard.
Um, I concur, I think that, um, sticking with a standard process is, um, is an example of good governance.
Okay, thank you. We will be taking individual speakers with one minute. Our next speaker under organized presentation will be Anna Kier, re-representing a, a group of, uh, prior public officials.
Um, Anna Kier, long-term resident, long-term Ram- San Mateo resident, council members. I direct your attention to the five former San Mateo mayors who are here with us tonight. Maureen Fraschet had a prior commitment and regrets that she could not join us. To shorten the evening, I am proud to speak for all the mayors that are present. With 53 years of combined city council experience, we know why these esteemed former mayors are here. They have already publicly conveyed their feelings regarding Mayor Lee. I quote, "Our local democracy is strained and damaged. Confidence in our local government is increasingly called to question. That is because no one has been held to account. A significant public reconciliation is called for." Jack Matthews commented, "Lee is unfit to serve the city and should resign." With no visible movement yet in that direction, we call on the council to have the fortitude to do whatever is needed to rebuild trust and faith with the community. Whether by action of resignation, removal, censure, conduct policies, or a combination thereof, the status quo cannot stand. We urge your, we urge your divisive action, excuse me, we urge your deci- decisive action for real change. I'll say that again, we urge your decisive action for real change. We will closely monitor this, monitor this meeting outcome. Thank you very much, and thank you to the former mayors.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to individual public comment. Um, I'm going to call up three, uh, names at a time. I'm going to ask that you line up on this wall here so we can move expeditiously through the individual speakers. So if I could have you first line up for us, uh, the first speaker would be Tasso Zograffis, followed by Lisa Tanner, then Thomas Morgan. These are in-person. And give us one second to set up the timer.
The damage of crying wolf, a willful intent to fool others. Imagine someone knowingly making a false police report about a crime that never happened. What should be the consequence? Might we forgive if that person offered a sincere apology? What if that person instead doubled down arguing they did nothing wrong? A narcissist would surely blame others instead. It's not me, it's them. Amherst Lee did just that. She went on the offensive, blaming and attacking the residents she's supposed to represent, calling residents racist, anti-abortionists, and other names, rallying outside pronies and surrogates to defend her. For her, politics is just a game, and mayor who prides herself on dividing communities is no mayor at all. Rich Hedges, you benefited from ammo storytelling. I hope you can be impartial tonight. The appearance of quid pro quo, backroom dealings is equally damaging to public trust. Do the right thing, remove her from office.
Next speaker is Lisa Tanner, followed by Thomas Morgan, and then Michael Weinauer.
Good evening. Wow, a letter of expression of opinion. What message are we sending to a reckless mayor? Amherst Lee, years of unbecoming behavior and violation of her sworn oath, with taxpayers now funding the DA investigation that found no evidence to support her claims. The public has lost all faith, even our senator and congressman have turned away from Lee, yet Jordan Grimes is steadfast. Then I remember Jordan and I both know a true housing advocate, one who reported she turned her back on him due to his chronic lies and failure to set boundaries in his relentless pursuit of the limelight. So maybe that makes sense, that he would support you, but he isn't our councilperson. Lee is, and she should be stripped of all powers for failing San Mateans. She's not my mayor.
Thank you, no comments, please. Um, next speaker is Thomas Morgan, followed by Michael Weinauer, and then Alan Matlich.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. These are my own comments. I remain disappointed, and I see so much, so many comments from my fellow neighbors and the dislikes of the actions that transpired. I'm also curious if there, but we didn't, we didn't hear about any criminal activity, but are there any legal ramifications or lawsuits that could be brought against the city for actions that occurred on that night? And if so, what's that exposure? Because it seems somewhat hypocritical that in the past, uh, the mayor and other council members have been against putting the city in positions where they could be sued, and here we are, potentially in a situation where we could be sued for, uh, presenting unvalidated information, and we saw last week with what happened with Fox News and that huge lawsuit. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Weinauer, followed by Alan Matlich, and then Rebecca Schaaf.
Evening, members of the council. By not having a code of conduct in place with real consequences for electeds and appointees, we are contending we're now with a mayor having fabricated an entire rubric to tamper with an appointment process and planning commissioners raging unjustly against entire neighborhoods, stealing, and attempting to tank our housing element because they are protected by the same mayor with the same lack of accountability. Given the totality of the evidence and broad community outcry, including several former Lee allies and six former mayors of San Mateo, one cannot dismiss this as politics or housing or a dress. It's nothing more than bad behavior. Zero of the mayors supported Measure Y, for example. Such deflection is either misinformed or meant to misinform. Thanks to four-fifths of this body who understands the importance of this, council member Lorraine, thank you for course correcting. Now it's time for action. Don't cede the moral high ground and fall for the ends justify the means. This must be a thorough process and comprehensive until we understand what happened and make sure these don't happen again. Do this for San Mateo, for, to honor the office you hold, your legacy, and as well as that of the great former mayors whose shoulders you stand upon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Matlich, followed by Rebecca Schaaf, and then Stephanie Rees.
I actually didn't intend to talk on this topic, but, uh, this afternoon, I understood that, uh, code of conduct was going to be discussed. Um, and I did some searching on various codes of conduct, um, that are, you know, cities in California, and I noticed that, uh, San Mateo, uh, Ethics San Mateo has done the same thing. On their list was Fireball California's Code of Conduct. Uh, section eight reads, uh, for disclosure of corruption. Uh, their code of conduct reads, "Everyone shall take an oath upon assuming office pledging to uphold the Constitution and laws of the city and state and the federal government. As a part of this oath, officials commit to disclosing to the appropriate authorities and/or the city council any behavior or action that may qualify as corruption, abuse, fraud, bribery, or other violations of the law." It seems to me if Mayor Lee did not do what she did, she would be in violation of this code of conduct. So I think we should consider very carefully what kind of code of conduct we adopt.
Thank you, Alan. Next speaker is Rebecca Schaaf, followed by Stephanie Reyes, and then Rafael Reyes.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Schaaf, and I'm a San Mateo resident. Regarding the DA's report, I accept its conclusion that no Brown Act violations or quid pro quo took place. I also accept that the ways Mayor Lee was approached during the leadership transition were worthy of investigation, and that reporting them was a responsible way to handle it. Both of these things are true. So what are the appropriate next steps? I call on the council to respond to the climate crisis and its impacts on San Mateo residents today, to address our housing shortage in ways that engender a diverse and thriving community, to support our libraries and our water and transportation infrastructure. The council's priority list for this fiscal year contains three pages of worthy projects. I ask the council to accept the outcome of the DA's report and focus on the city's business with goodwill.
Thank you. Stephanie Reyes, followed by Rafael Reyes, and then Mike Cagiano. Okay, uh, Rafael Reyes, followed by Mike Cagiano, and then Michael Reagan.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Rafael Reyes. Uh, I have had the pleasure of serving on, uh, commissions for, uh, eight years. Uh, prior to this, I get that people were unhappy with the election. I get that people may be unhappy with some of the actions that the mayor has taken. What I don't hear amongst all of the very divisive calls here is I don't hear much responsibility being attributed to the politicization of the, uh, process of the council reorganization, which also was very unhealthy, created divisions among the council, a burden for the staff, and inability to address the city's business. It is time to move on, to recognize that you are all on the council together because you were each elected by members of the city or residents in the city. If I have one recommendation, it's to consider an at-large mayor role to move on from this kind of division. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Michael Cagiano, followed by Michael Reagan, and then Doug Henton.
Okay, fellow citizens.
Fellow citizens of Rome, we’ve got a good bit of discord and invective that’s been flying here, there, and everywhere. I’d like to look at the original cause of most of this problem was the archaic and totally dysfunctional method of having a mayor break a tie when you’ve got a tie that could be created by a mayor, and then get the chance to say, “Ah, I shall resolve the issue.” So that’s got to be changed. The best outcome would be what you ended up with. After all the storm and drung, you ended up with a fairly good mechanism. And we have an excellent council. Rather than follow on what people are saying, how everything is so terrible, this is an excellent, functioning, well-oriented, and collegial group of people that I’ve seen. I think you even like each other. Don’t tell anybody else. But why don’t we look at now the issue of the DA? And I think in good conscience... Oh, I’m done already.
Yes.
Done over again. All right. We don’t need tempests and teapots. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reagan, followed by Doug Hinton, and then Judy Blume.
Yes, good evening. I’m here to address the concerns issue of Mayor Amherst Lee. He is violating the code of ethics for the San Mateo city officers. Specifically, Mayor Lee has violated the subsection that state officers of this city must be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, and that public office must not be used for personal gain. Furthermore, Mayor Lee has also violated the Officer Responsibility subsection, which states that officers must hold office for the benefit of the people and observe the highest standard of morality. It is unacceptable that Mayor Lee has not faithfully discharged those duties of her office, regardless of personal concerns and that public interest has not been her primary concern. In addition, Mayor Lee has violated the Fair and Equal Treatment subsection by granting special consideration, treatment, or advantage to certain citizens, such as Commissioner Adam Nugent twice, and providing unequal treatment of council candidates Cliff Robbins and Roblyn Harris. Talk about the dress, you who...
Thank you, Michael.
Who Adam... You and Adam questioned his religious beliefs.
Thank you very much.
We need to do better.
Next speaker is Doug Hinton, followed by Judy Blume, and then Michelle Hudson.
Thank you. I’m Doug Hinton, longtime resident of San Mateo. I came here tonight because I’m a concerned citizen. Like the mayors, I’m concerned about the polarization that’s been going on as a result of some of these conversations. I’m glad I was here for the last agenda item and the fact that the district attorney has found nothing wrong. I’m a big supporter of the mayor. I think she’s doing a great job in supporting affordable housing, and I appreciate the fact that she’s standing up for what she believes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Judy Blume, followed by Michelle Hudson, and then Nancy Schneider.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to address you. I have been a resident of San Mateo for the past 15 years and of San Mateo County since 1969. I’ve been involved in politics at all different levels in the county, and I moved here because I believe in the San Mateo way, and I’ve been proud of the conduct of the city up until this year. I agree with Rebecca. I concur with her. I concur with Doug Hinton. I think that it is very important for our city to get on with the business. As you sit here today and speak civilly, I expect that to happen in the future, and I’d like you to be addressing the business of the city, not about censuring or charging each other with misbehavior, because we just need to move on and take care of the conduct of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michelle Hudson, followed by Nancy Schneider, and then Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, council. I’m here to speak in support of Mayor Lee, who has properly fulfilled the duties of her position. Mayor Lee has demonstrated a commitment to transparency and due process. Last December, Mayor Lee did the right thing by disclosing to the DA concerning communications that she received related to the mayor’s selection process. Fortunately, the DA concluded that no criminal actions occurred. That should have been the end of this chapter, but it wasn’t. Mayor Lee has been under constant attack, and here we all are tonight. It is high time for the attacks on Mayor Lee to stop and for this council and community to move on and address the significant challenges facing San Mateo, including threats to the environment, completion of a state-certified housing element, and fair allocation of scarce resources. It makes no sense to waste valuable time and energy on anything other than the city’s pressing business. The council can help put an end to this waste of resources tonight. I implore the council to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy Schneider, followed by Jordan Grimes, and then Carol Hinton.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I am a longtime San Mateo homeowner in District 1. I am incredibly disappointed that some people in our city feel that the most important thing the city must do is to get rid of a duly-elected city council member who has not broken any laws or acted outside the behavior guidelines already approved by this council. They just don’t agree with her positions. Mayor Lee has proven herself to be a dedicated public servant and has done numerous good things for the city, including creating the San Mateo Flood Relief Fund. Mayor Lee should not be censured, recalled, removed, or forced to resign. Please remember that history did not begin with the DA report. None of this would have happened if two of you, our council members, followed the charter in regular order and voted for the mayor in the first meeting in December. Please get back to work on the important issues facing us, including getting our housing element certified by the state, developing a new general plan that meets the needs of all San Mateans, and creating policies to reduce San Mateo’s contribution to the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jordan Grimes, followed by Carol Hinton, and then Doug D.
Jordan Grimes, lifelong San Matean, political director of the Peninsula Young Democrats. Comments are my own tonight. Like many, I’m a little tired of having to schlep down here every week to defend the mayor from the spurious attacks of her detractors. But we will be here this week, next week, and the one after that. We will not be deterred. I reiterate again my support of Mayor Lee and condemn the character assassination to which she has been subjected. You will not shame her, as you will not shame those of us who envision a city governed not by the backroom wheeling and dealing of a small, unrepresentative cohort of nostalgic exclusionary homeowners, but by an active and holistic citizenry. Mayor Lee has been a champion of a more progressive, diverse, and inclusive city, of the working class, of the most vulnerable in our community. Her service to us is unimpeachable, and we stand by her. In the face of overwhelming pressure brought to bear by the political establishment of yesteryear, she has remained unflappable and movable in service of a future not just for some, but for all. We will win because we have the most powerful ally of all on our side. Time.
Thank you. Carol Hinton, followed by Doug D., and then David Berudo.
Hi, my name is Carol Hinton. I’m a longtime resident here in San Mateo, and I speak in support of ending this fractious and divisive controversy. We have much to do here in the city. The city council would be well-served to move forward, accept the DA report recommendations, and work on the important business of the city. And I hope, Mayor Lee, that you are able in good faith to lead this city. I think public service is a very honorable thing, and all of you, all five of you, are to be commended for serving our city.
Thank you. Next speaker is Doug D., followed by David Berudo, and then Barbara Paves. Thank you.
Doug, I’m a long-term resident of San Mateo, and I join the five former San Mateo mayors in demanding that the council take immediate action against Mayor Lee’s actions and failures by demanding her resignation. As Jerry Hill, Claire Mack, and Jack Matthews wrote in the Daily Journal, “The council must hold her accountable for her misconduct. The residents of San Mateo deserve to be represented by someone who will listen to their voices and act in their best interests and not in their own.” I requested the council place on the agenda a process in place to censure the mayor. Not placing this important item on the agenda does a disservice to the community. One final note, where does Mr. Robbins go back to claim his good name? Keep that in mind.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Berudo, followed by Barbara Pavesek, and then Carol Eldridge.
I do respectfully request I get two minutes. I think three of us deserve that.
Your time is going.
Mayor and council members, I’m going to skip a little bit of what I had here to say tonight because we’re being truncated and not being extended a courtesy that I think we do deserve. I’m going to say in short, Mayor Lee’s conduct has been very difficult for us. It’s very disappointing. It’s very distressing to see that this division has been the locus of Mayor Lee, has been caused by Mayor Lee. The smears, the tactics of personal character assassination have really been the hallmark of her tenure on council. I’m here tonight as one of the victims of that, and I’m asking you to take some action to hold her accountable. It’s way past time. What that looks like is up to you. But this city needs to heal. I don’t need an apology, but this city does, and it needs it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barbara Pavesek, followed by Carol Eldridge, and then Erin Berger, maybe?
Thank you. My name is Barbara Pavech, and I’m a lifelong member. I’ve lived here a long time. I accept the DA’s report, and I also believe that people were acting in good faith, and that people can hear things differently and have conversations where one person thinks they said something, one person heard something differently. And I’m really the tenor of this conversation today, and the name-calling, and someone picking on Jordan Grimes, who I’ve known since he was a little kid, and he took my daughter to prom. You know, to have someone say something like that about a really kind, nice person, something has to change here, and the tenor has to change. And for people to say that this is about politics, this is about people having different opinion about our housing and the vision for the future, and instead of accepting the ballot box, people are now going after Mayor Lee. And I read all the DA reports, I read everything that came through the line, all these council reports, and so many of the people’s conversations and comments, including Ethics of San Mateo, talked about things that were not ethical.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Eldridge, followed by, I think it’s Ara Berger, and then Seema Patel.
Good evening. My name is Carol Eldridge, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. I would like to start by turning to those in the chambers and asking everyone who came in support of Mayor Lee, please to stand up. Thank you. I recently attended the State of the City address and was struck by the full extent of the city’s responsibilities and concerns. In the present moment, those concerns include weighty concerns no less than getting HCD certification of the housing element and creating a new general plan. All of this wrangling about resignation is diverting valuable time, energy, and resources away from dealing with these weighty concerns. I and other members of One San Mateo have done a lot of advocacy around housing policies, and one of the issues that keeps coming up is the limitations on staff capacity. This is not doing anything to help that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Our next speaker, Erin Berger, is that right? And then Seema Patel, followed by Amy Lee.
Hello, and good evening, council. I think that a lot of what we’re facing here today is from a simple fact of an ongoing progression of history. San Mateo historically is a city unused to politics. It is a city of tremendous uniformity in between its people, in between... Sorry, in between its citizens, in between its residents, its renters, et cetera. And over time, that ground began to shift. New people began to move in. The demographics began to change. People who have different desires from the overall... Sorry. People have different desires, and people who used to live in San Mateo now live here and now express those desires in the arena of politics. Given that these contradictions are taking place, I think it’s incredibly important that we are all aware of the truth of the politics and varsity. And that means that when Mayor Lee stands on the dais and tells us what is going on, it is important for everyone to know. It is not just for us to ignore, as ugly as it may be. And with that, and finally, when the ugliness is exposed, only then will people be able to work together to make the city actually advance. Keeping things swept under the rug is not in our best interest.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Seema Patel, followed by Amy Lee, and Jonathan New.
Hello, I am speaking on my own behalf again. At the last city council meeting, one of our youth activists, a 14-year-old, gave a public comment. At the end of the public comment period, David Cohen, the director of Ethics San Mateo, berated him for his comments and repeated, “You just earned your daddy a nice lawsuit.” This is not the first time that Mr. Cohen has harassed or threatened this 14-year-old child in person. Mr. Zagrafos and Mr. Weinauer have a history of attacking San Mateo’s civically-engaged youth on social media, to the point where parents have had to step in and ask them to stop. After last week’s meeting, Connie Weiss, Mr. Weinauer, and the official Facebook page of the recall began referring to me as a groomer, presumably because I happened to be sitting next to that youth. As many people know, including them, this word has been co-opted by the far-right to attack the LGBTQ community. Is this the San Mateo way? Deputy Mayor Nash and Councilmember Newsom, I know you can’t control the most extreme members of your base, but you can control who you associate with. Ms. Weiss, Mr. Weinauer, and Mr. Zagrafos all had prominent positions on your campaigns. I hope that moving forward, you choose to elevate other decent supporters to advisory and campaign positions, instead of people who think harassing children and hurling homophobic slurs is a justified means to a political end.
Next speaker is Amy Lee, followed by Jonathan New, and then Katie Bush.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lee, honorable council members. Thank you for having the strength to listen to all of our comments. This is very... I’m sitting in the back of the room, and I’m feeling the tension and all the energy that’s being put into this. And as many people have said already, there’s so many concerns. And when I saw the State of San Mateo presentation on April 17th, I was impressed and inspired by all the things that we can do when we put our energy towards solving all of our problems, putting our constituents first. That’s what Roy spoke to me tonight, and I hope it speaks to you as well. So I don’t come with solutions, only that I think we need to move on and put our energies towards the future. So thank you once again.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan New, followed by Katie Bush, and then Jennifer Martinez.
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I came here tonight in support of our mayor, Amherst Lee. She’s been at the forefront of building affordable housing, raising money for flood relief victims, and has repeatedly proven herself to be a hard-working and thoughtful public servant. I appreciate that Mayor Lee publicly exposed the discussions that attempted to influence her vote. These conversations placed her in an awkward, compromised position. Imagine the scandal that would have erupted if she had kept quiet and then conversations leaked out. Though difficult, she made the moral sensible choice, a choice that would have been moot if we’d simply followed precedent and selected her as mayor before any of this could have had the chance of happening. The recall efforts and the pleas to resign remained absurd waste of time and energy. Upon selection, Councilmember Hedges called for unity. We should heed his suggestion, move on, and focus on San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Katie Bush, followed by Jennifer Martinez, and then Kenne Bru.
Hi, everyone. I’m speaking only for myself. I want to start by recognizing expressly that the five individuals up here are first and foremost human beings and public servants. At their cores, they got into this because they want to do the right thing. Perhaps that sounds naive, but I know all five of them would agree with me. That includes Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash and Councilmember Newsom’s actions in December, even though I spoke out against them, and it includes Mayor Lee’s actions in December. I read the DA report, and based on my review, it’s unreasonable to call Mayor Lee a liar, and it’s unreasonable to call for her censor, her resignation, or her recall. You may not agree with the way she chose to raise her concerns at the time, those were political choices, but it’s false to say the DA report somehow shows she’s a liar. I’m asking the five members here who are trying to do what’s right to please just close this item without action or further direction and let us move on.
Next speaker, thank you, is Jennifer Martinez, followed by Kenne Bru, and then Owen Day.
Good evening. I live in the neighborhood of North Central, and my neighborhood is deeply concerned about affordable housing, safe streets, clean streets, more trees, more outdoor activities for children, family services, and all of these are things that Mayor Lee has supported and worked hard for in her time on the council and now as mayor. And these are the kinds of things that our city council needs to get back to work focusing on. The activities of the past few months have left me very disheartened, and the idea that citizens or that Mayor Lee is not representing constituency is false. She is absolutely representing the constituency of my neighborhood, where all of these needs have gone for decades without being addressed. So I encourage you to move on with the city business, to listen to the other constituents in this community who represent tens and dozens behind us who are unable to be here on evenings like this, week after week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kenne Bru, followed by Owen Day, and then Tom Lees.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. You're the leaders. You're the leaders of this city, and what we need is this discord and vitriol to stop. And you guys can do that. We have a ton of work as a city to get done. We've got a housing element that's not certified. We've got a general plan. We want to get something on the ballot to amend Measure Y. You've got parks, you've got police, you've got fire department, all need to be worked on. I come to these meetings and I hear the city's staff is already stretched. You guys are already stretched. I'm stretched for coming here to have to talk about things like this. We need to get back to just doing the work. The report came in from the DA, they did a good job, they said there's nothing more to look at from a criminal perspective. That was good work by them. Let's move on. Let's, we've got a perfectly good set of guidelines that are already in your guidelines for your conduct. Please follow them and then get to work. Let's not consume time on these things that are just going to be poor fuel on the fire of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen Day, followed by Tom Lees, and then Lisa Malley.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Owen Day. I'm 14, I'm in high school, and quite frankly, I'm tired. I've come to every single one of these meetings since January. I see the incredible work you do to help our city, and I think that this discussion, this discourse, has become so toxic that there is no way to make anything productive out of it anymore. When you get to the point, when you have the police called on you by a member of the recall team for simply counter-protesting one of their events, when you have your family threatened with lawsuits, when you're accused of being groomed, there is nothing here that is productive anymore. We need to stop enabling this toxic rhetoric and get back to the business of our city that actually benefits people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Lees, followed by Lisa Malley, and then David Pollock.
Hi, Tom Lees. Thank you all for your service, and I believe, I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I was recently sworn in as a San Mateo Senior Commissioner, and I would love for us to have a code of conduct. Basically, after what Adam Nugent did when he took the signs and then he gave no apology or showed any remorse, there's a lot of power in apologizing, and I think if we do something wrong and we apologize, then people will accept the apology and we can heal more. But like what the last, no one should go through what this young man has to go through. And I've heard, there's so much division on here. When I see Amherst or Adam, even though that we don't agree on Measure Y, I always reach out my hands to you, and I think if we all could, you know, kind of lower the temperature and talk to each other, we could get a lot done. So, I think it's better if we can just try to be friends and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Malley, followed by David Pollock, and then Lisa Van de Vord.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Lisa Malley. I'm calling for disciplinary action against Mayor Lee for her unethical and harmful actions. Her disqualification of a council candidate and undermining the legitimacy of another amounts to the dismantling of the democratic process. Her failure to accept responsibility and her deflection of blame onto her friends and allies demonstrate a clear lack of integrity and leadership. There is fear and distrust in our community, given that no one is safe from her wrath. Mayor Lee's actions have caused harm to individuals, to the city as a whole, and to the trust that our community places in its leaders. The discipline of Lee must equal the magnitude of harm that has been done and prevent future harm. The most appropriate action is to remove her from the office of mayor. Councilmember Lorraine, I'm asking for your help in bringing this matter before the council. Your District Five constituents expect nothing less.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
David Pollock, followed by Lisa Van de Vord, and then Christopher Conway.
Hi, my name is David Pollock, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the San Mateo County Stonewall Dems, for which I'm Director of Communications. I'm here to speak out about the disturbing trend of the degradation of civil discourse in our community. Over the past five months, we've witnessed the shocking display of the use of homophobic terms in San Mateo. Most recently, individuals backing the recall of Mayor Lee have used the terms grooming and manipulation to describe the relationship between a politically-engaged, openly-gay-youth activist and supporter of Mayor Lee. Such use of words like grooming and manipulation are clearly homophobic. Using such hateful language not only belittles the intelligence and agency of achievements of young activists, but also attempts to delegitimize and silence their voices on issues important to them. Thank you.
Next speaker, Lisa Van de Vord. Christopher Conway, followed by Chris Cavioli.
Mayor Lee and council, let's examine the city charter's provisions on the selection of mayor, the crux of where we are today. Section 2.01 clearly states that the city council is composed of five members, not four. So, Nash and Newsom's insistence on filling the vacant seat before voting for mayor was totally appropriate. Additionally, section 2.02 states that the mayor serves at the pleasure of the city council. Therefore, council should have the power to remove you. Section 2.07 addresses forfeiture of office, specifically Clause 7 speaks to your qualifications, which are questionable based on either your innocent or purposeful ignorance of the Brown Act. The city charter and violation of its existing code of ethics, particularly the subdivisions of Chapter 2.12, as Per Marlene Tam's email to you today, are grounds for your removal, not simply censure. For all these reasons and for the good of the city, the city council must remove you from the office of mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Christopher Conway, followed by Chris Caviola and then Mary Cravalo.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Conway. I've been resident my entire life in the city of San Mateo, and I was one of eight candidates for the fifth seat vacated by Diane Pappan. I, along with seven other gentlemen, including Mr. Robbins and Mr. Hedges, were all qualified candidates for the open seat. However, little did we know at the time, the fix was already in. I ran for open seat because I absolutely came to my wit's end with our city government and their involvement in undermining the will of the voters and the residents of San Mateo. Let's make one thing clear. Ms. Lee acted inappropriately in the governance of our city. This is based on the district attorney's findings versus the stunt she pulled with the manila envelope and the allegations she made on that very night of December 12th, 2022. No matter how she would like to spin that today, I was there that fateful night. I know what happened, what was said, and what theatrics was used. One needs only to review the council meeting
Chris, thank you.
To judge for yourselves. And Mr. Robbins, I'm sorry that happened to you.
Chris Cavioli, Mary Cravalo, and then Nicole Fernandez.
Hello, my name is Chris Cavioli, and I, it's painful to hear about all the potential costs here and the loss of trust in our leadership, so I believe I have a solution. And I wanted to remind everybody that all the government reports to we, the people, and there's enough evidence of misconduct, and I think it just should be laid out clearly what happened and how to fix it. And I want to take it one step further, is that it's not just about us, but all of us report to our Father Almighty in heaven, and He knows everything we do. It's in Psalm 139. And we all stand before Him on Judgment Day, and we'll be judged by Him. So, therefore, let us not, you know, He decides if we spend eternity in heaven or in hell, and we don't want anyone to spend eternity in hell because it's a horrible place. So, I would say, you know, we could spend a lot of money on this thing and fight and argue, and I don't think that's a good idea. I also agree we should move on, but we should do the things the right way. So, I would ask Amherst to please confess and repent before the Lord and resign from your controversial precision that's causing this division. There's other things we can do, and I'd be happy to pray with you and pray for you. If you want to, I'm here for you. And I will do that.
Mary Cravalo, followed by Nicole Fernandez, and then Cliff Robbins.
Hello, council. I know you all put a lot of time and effort into everything, and I'm calling for unity and peace and love. The heart of our city is broken, and I would like to see ethics, policy. I'm a little bit curious as to, if we have ethics, code of conduct policies, but we don't follow them, then what does that mean? If the council has different rules than the commissioners and others, you know, what message does that send? So, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see our broken-hearted city heal. 16 seconds. Our inner-strengths experiences and truths cannot be lost, destroyed, or taken away. Every person has an inborn worth and can contribute to the human community. We all can treat one another with dignity and respect, provide opportunities to grow towards our fullest lives,
Thank you.
Help one another discover and develop our unique gifts. We each deserve this, and we all can extend it to others.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Nicole Fernandez, followed by Cliff Robbins, and then Max Motner.
Hi there. My name is Nicole Fernandez, and I am one of the subjects, the three subjects of the DA's investigation instigated by Mayor Lee's tactics. I'm a homeowner in North Central neighborhood, the heart of Mayor Lee's district, should she be elected in 2024. And I got sent to the DA's, I got reported to the DA's office for doing something that millions of Americans do every day, which is engage their elected official on an issue I care about deeply. I haven't said much publicly, but this, it was important for me to be here tonight. I don't want Mayor Lee to resign, nor do I join in the calls for her to be recalled. If I had more time, I'd tell you more about what the investigation did to my mental health and how the stress caused an increase in both my blood pressure and the anti-exity medication I take. I'd tell you about how I had to look my immigrant parents in the eye and tell them I needed a lawyer because I was under investigation by the DA. Mayor Lee, you have created an atmosphere where the people feel like they cannot trust their elected representatives, but worse than that, they question whether democracy can thrive in our office, in our city. I want Mayor Lee to make a public apology. I want it to be in writing, and I want to see the council disavow Mayor Lee's dramatic actions through a letter of disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cliff Robbins.
It brings me no great pleasure to have to be here tonight. I'm here because Councilmember Lee attacked me without cause, attacked dedicated community leaders who advocated for me, and attacked a core tenet of our democratic process. Let's be clear, nothing illegal, unethical, or even arguably improper took place by me or on my behalf. The council member turned a public meeting into a circus with a planned stunt to further her own self-interest, pulling my name out of an envelope as if we were on some bargain-basement reality show. She then falsely claimed corruption and argued that she should be elected mayor on the spot. Councilmember Lee, did you forget that in 2019, when you were seeking appointment to this council, you asked for my support and asked that I reach out to councilmembers that I knew on your behalf? The behavior that you now continue to argue is somehow improper. Citizens reached out to you with advice about how you should vote. Not only is that completely proper, that is fundamental cornerstone of our democracy. Sadly, you violated that principle.
Thank you. Max Motner, followed by Jim Sale, and then Ted Kenyon.
Like Cliff, I had a front row seat to a lot of this. I also read the DA's report, which I recommend everyone do. It's two and a half pages. Having read it, I thank Mayor Lee for doing the right thing. She acted in good faith, blew the whistle, and drew attention to multiple unsolicited, legally-dangerous proposals made to her. We need more public servants like her. She acted in the best interests of our community by highlighting the legal risk of the position she was put in when the mayoral rotation process wasn't honored. The San Francisco Chronicle reports that the effort to recall Mayor Lee was initiated before the mayoral rotation was hijacked, and that the leaders of that initiative are councilmembers Diaz Nash and Newsom's respective campaign managers. Given this timeline, the discussion tonight is evidently not about the DA's report at all. Please move on from this discussion in a manner that would attract our city's residents to public service and not repel them.
Thank you. We have seven remaining in-house speakers. Next is Jim Sale, followed by Ted Kenyon, and then Jean Dale.
Mayor Lee, city council, affordable housing, that is the ugly thing in the room. The, this whole episode is over the fight for affordable housing. We have two elements in this community, an element that wants San Mateo to stay the same, and an element that wants it to progress. The, this whole issue is a effort to move forward the hand over the development of San Mateo. The height and density requirements that exist in San Mateo from Proposition Y that have been in effect for 30 years have, for every bedroom that has not been built, there's another car on the road. Let's get down to work and build houses. Thank you.
Ted Kenyon, followed by Jean Dale, and then Chris Eckert.
I'll learn to spell my last name better in the future. It's Ted McKinnon. Good evening, Mayor Lee and the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry things came to this. I've heard some folks that I know personally, and it's pretty wrenching, but I'm here to support Mayor Lee. We have both a housing and a climate crisis. Emma Lee has taken affirmative steps to address these issues. I believe at bottom, her policy actions are what offends her detractors. Umbraids over policy differences do not merit any special action on the part of the council. That's what elections are for. The recall effort was well underway before the district elections. The December power play was part of and parcel of that. Everybody knows that, everybody knows this, especially those who engineered it, two of whom are sitting on the dais right now. Nevertheless, I'm hoping we can get past this distraction and still work together as the neighbors that we are, that we all are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jean Dale, followed by Chris Eckert, and then Charmaine Messina.
Good evening. First, I have a question for Mayor Lee. Given your actions and comments on December 12th, how are you going to complete a redo for Cliff Robbins? Second, I want us to visit some definitions of honor. Let's see. High public esteem, a source of credit or distinction, the best, the privilege of being associated with or receiving a favor from a respected person, group, or organization. I usually begin my comments to all of you as honorable city council members. I cannot say that this evening for all of you. Thanks to those of you who put the DA's allegation of the Brown Act violation and vote trading on the agenda tonight, I applaud you for your recognition, for recognizing there has been untruthful behavior by Mayor Lee.
Thank you.
I hope you will act accordingly to stop this type of behavior. Thank you.
Chris Eckert, followed by Charmaine Messina, and then our final speaker in the chamber is Rick Bonilla.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to say that our city leaders set the direction for our city, and they set the direction for the behavior of our citizens. And if someone on the council is found to have lied, as my interpretation of the DA report would indicate, I think that that person should make the right decision and decide that maybe this is not the position for them and that they should resign. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charmaine Messina, followed by Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and city council members. I helped draft the code of conduct for Corporation and implemented its Ethics and Compliance program for years. In the end, a lot of compliance and ethics programs can be boiled down to mutual trust and respect. I do not in any way condone the offensive language I do not in any way condone the offensive language and the homophobic language that has been attributed to Mayor Lee's opponents. However, I also came here because I was offended by Mayor Lee's lack of leadership and divisive words. When, first of all, I think she should have apologized to Cliff Roberts, to Robbins. And then after the DA's office came, came out with a report, rather than try to unite people, she divided the populace into the new generation, which frankly, I think is somewhat ageist, and the old guard losing their grip on power, her resorting to MAGA-style extremism. I am not MAGA. I just want the city council to follow the vote.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Bonilla.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. We know who I am. I'm here tonight to make some personal comments. Some people think that every little, excuse me, glasses. Some people think that every little bit of life is some sort of a game to be won or to move a piece incrementally toward what they think is a win or a success. Other people see life as a more collaborative experience, where we seek to bring good for all, to bring unity, goodwill, and to make sure that all are able to have what they need. Our city government needs to be engaged in good governance. Good governance does not include agreeing with every single voice that is heard, because some voices are self-serving and seek exclusive privilege. Good governance means analyzing and acting on what will be the best for all. We've had a group of people here for some years who sought to divide and demean and exclude for their own benefit. They have been encouraged by the examples that were set by a former president. The idea that those who show up and yell loudest or appear more threatening will get what they want. That's not how good governance works. The city has unmet financial needs and serious work for our elected. I'm sorry, my time is up. Thank you all very much. I had to vent. Appreciate it. Oh, I have additional comments that I will leave here for the record.
Okay, we can move to remote comments now. We have 12 speakers, so it should be about 15 more minutes at max. Okay, our first speaker remotely is Catherine. Catherine, please feel free to unmute yourself.
I have met Rod maybe three times and his wife once. They are members of my St. Gregory's Church family, but I have not spoken to them about my planned comments tonight. I suggest Mayor Lee and all council members watch the History Channel documentary, How John F. Kennedy Overcame Anti-Catholic Bias to Win the Presidency. The professional activist mob viciously attacked, viciously targeted Rod during the last council election in what was clearly an intimidation attempt. Preventing a candidate to run for office based on his or her faith is un-American and a terrible precedent. We need a new inclusive mayor. It's noteworthy, the city attorney told Lee there was no legal justification for disqualifying candidate Robbins, yet she still chose to go through the envelope show and do so to seat her preferred candidate. And she did so to seat her preferred candidate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Julie Lynn. Please go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. Julie Lynn with the San Mateo Labor Council, representing 85,000 workers and their families countywide, including staff for the city of San Mateo. There's been a lot of rhetoric back and forth on what the real issue is here. While every situation has its nuances, what's being discussed tonight is establishing mechanisms of accountability. Everyone should be able to exercise their right to petition their government without fear of legal retribution. There is no collusion here and no attempt at vote trading. The sanction of Mayor was a statement of fact irrespective of who would hold the fifth seat. Comments to that end were made multiple times on this dais. We're here because a couple of friends spoke to their friend, who happened to be an elected official, about their thoughts on a complicated political issue. A version of the same conversation dozens of us had during that time, including conversations instigated by Mayor Lee. Conversations similar to those had when Mayor Lee herself was applying for an appointment to this council. The recent series of events has shown us that the city absolutely needs a strong code of conduct for its elected and appointed leaders, and that consequences need to be established for those who choose to violate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Ballard, and please go ahead, Rick.
Good evening, council. This discussion was agendized after comments from those behind the effort to recall Mayor Lee. It's clear that this is a political tactic intended to undermine Mayor Lee and fuel the recall effort. To those in Districts 1 and 3 leading the recall, I say, you elected your favorite candidates in the district elections. Stop trying to remove the only representation District 5 has. Mayor Lee is a stellar representative of our priorities, though you clearly do not like them. I don't know what DA report Mayor Lee's detractors read, because the report confirmed Mayor Lee's honesty and integrity. It put on the record that her statements were truthful and that she was willing to put personal relationships at risk in order to do the right thing as a public official. A crucial point to remember in this matter is that Mayor Lee took pains to say that she did not personally know if Cliff Robbins had any involvement in quid pro quo discussions. It was secondhand. You can easily verify this in the meeting recording available on YouTube, and this fact debunks the entire basis of the complaints against her. So please stop indulging in politicking to raise the status of a recall effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexandra Dove.
Good evening. I am once again speaking on behalf of Mayor Lee. This is now my, I can't even tell you how many times I have spoken now because it just keeps happening. It's incredibly upsetting that we are once again calling into question the leadership, professionalism, and ability of this mayor. It's really upsetting as a proud resident of San Mateo, as a female, as a woman of faith, to see our female mayor, our mayor, who is a woman of color, who has once again put her service above self. She's put herself in harm's way by doing the right thing. She received information, she reported it, she followed the code of ethics that is required of her. And once again, this is being used against her, just like it was used against her to try to not make her be mayor in the first place. This is a continuation. It is a dangerous pattern. It is an upsetting pattern. It makes my heart break to be a resident of San Mateo. I hope that we can do better. I hope that we can focus on what is truly right for our city, and I stand with Mayor Lee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joel Kohn.
Thank you, members of the council. If I'm reserved, this was supposed to be a discussion about a code of conduct for the, for the city council. It seems like we've gotten a little bit off track of that. So in the spirit of that, I figure I'll just list some things that Mayor Lee has done during her tenure. She's raised $50,000 for victims of flooding in the city. She's approved 399 units of affordable housing, the largest in the city's history. She provided leadership to increase city revenue by almost $6 million through two ballot initiatives. She's also managed to retain a surprising amount of composure as two of her colleagues openly defied the city charter by refusing to do their jobs and seat a mayor before doing any other business, as is, again, outlined in the city charter. She's also reported, to the best of her ability, a solicitation to participate in an illegal political scheme. She accepted the outcome of the city attorney's report, which I think people are diligently ignoring. And she's continuing to work with a number of people who seem to be trying to destroy her life and career rather than spitting in their faces, as I imagine a lot of people, a lot of those among us would do in her situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maggie Trin.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Trin. I am speaking as an individual, San Mateo Foster City School District trustee. As the newest member of the board, I am still finding my way, but I am focused on building relationships and trust so that we can move forward with serving our constituents, many of whom we share with the city. The city of San Mateo is our partner in many things, including safety at our school campuses and surrounding streets. I encourage the city council to focus its limited bandwidth on making the city work for all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ronnie Eaton.
Hi, good evening. I share the concerns of everyone who's spoken tonight as well, and it is incredibly upsetting. And it wouldn't be happening if Mayor Lee truly believes in transparency. As I said before, Mayor Lee, I'm really disappointed that you weren't the persona that I thought you were, and I originally supported you, but your pattern of behavior has been so disappointing. Certainly not just what happened on December 12th. Your attack of Rodland Harris is just ridiculous, and you should apologize to him publicly. So I don't understand how that would be okay. It has nothing to do with some perceived vote trading. That was just a mean-spirited attack on a constituent, of somebody that was running against a friend of yours. So I do believe that we need a code of ethics, but we also need something that does enforce them. And I think, as Councilman Hedges suggested, an independent board is important. Some other councils have done that, some other cities have done that. So I'll be forwarding some information to you, Councilman Hedges, in that regard. But we do need something that is enforceable. We have a code of conduct right now that's just ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ryanne.
Good evening, council. Honorable Mayor Ryan Modashemi, thanks for the opportunity to address you. I'll start out by saying that I don't think I've agreed with, you know, I don't think I've agreed 100% with anything that anyone on the dais or preceding you on the dais has done or, or said or striven to do or, or necessarily even, you know, stands for completely. But I will say that I do not believe that there was wrongdoing or violation of the nation, and that I do believe that you all are doing your best to prioritize your constituents and their issues writ large in the city of San Mateo, which I greatly appreciate. I believe that we should move on. I believe that we should accept the results, and I can't believe I'm saying this, accept the results of the issue-oriented campaign of the 2022 election, accept the mayoral selection, identify ways to eliminate the and move on. We must move on.
Thank you, Ryanne. The next speaker is Royzen McLeary.
Hi, Roisin McLeary. I am a local climate activist and student at the College of San Mateo, here to pledge my support for Mayor Lee. To me, this is an obvious power grab. It's a racist and sexist smear campaign, and it makes me ashamed of my city, which I'm usually very proud of. Mayor Lee has been excellent to the climate cause and has really been a climate champion. And I can't believe this is happening. I think this is part of a broader trend against democracy, where Republicans are losing power, and their last resort to maintain it is to strike back against the will of people. This is ridiculous, and I can't believe it's happening in my own community. And I urge the city council members who are smearing Mayor Lee to stop this, if not step down themselves, because this is absolutely ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Kay, followed by Robin, and then Stephanie Reyes, and that'll be the end of our virtual public comment.
Hello, Brian Kiefer. I am a member of the Peninsula DSA, though I'm speaking only, solely on my own behalf this evening. I'm a homeowner and resident here in San Mateo, and I'm extremely concerned that several members of the council seem to be pursuing this so-called ethics case as a witch hunt against the mayor. It's concerning that those very same council members appear to also be behind a recall effort aimed at the mayor as well. In my view, the circumstances around the referral to the DA was entirely appropriate, given the extraordinary nature of the blockage of the protocol to appoint the mayor, as outlined in this, in the charter, and the association with the recall effort against her. I think a reasonable human being could conclude that those messages were an attempt at quid pro quo. And I'd like to remind those members of the council that elections are how democracy sets policy. Stop trying to subvert the democracy by unseating the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robin. Please go ahead, Robin.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you for your time. My name is Robin Gage, and I'm a resident of District 2. I'm angry and disappointed that there are no consequences whatsoever for Mayor Lee's unethical behavior. This wasn't simply heated political speech or tough campaign talk. Mayor Lee made false accusations and statements. In order to seat her own candidate, she subverted full community participation in the process, defamed a valued community leader, and undermined the reputation of two fellow city council members as she stated or implied they were all involved in her vote trading scheme. Please hold her accountable for her actions, whether it's a new central process or to the existing codes of conduct. You know, overall, I think we need some sort of a process to hold public officials accountable for their conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Stephanie Reyes.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Reyes, and I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood. There's a scene in the movie Frozen where Anna and Kristoff are off trying to save their community from the endless winter. On their way, they meet a troll family who keep going on and on about how Anna and Kristoff should start dating. Finally, Kristoff begs in frustration, "Can we please just stop talking about this? We've got a real, actual problem here." After months of acrimonious meetings like this one, I am here to beg us all, "Can we please just stop talking about this and focus on the real, actual problems here in San Mateo?" Mayor Lee and her former colleagues on the prior city council made good progress addressing San Mateo's actual problems. I expect this newly-elected council to do the same.
Thank you. Mayor Lee, that is the end of our public comment.
Thank you. I just want to do a check on how are we doing? Do we need a break before we go on, or should we continue forward? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. We are getting ready to adjourn them, I mean, to reconvene the meeting. Please, if we could all take our seats and be quiet. We're going to reconvene the meeting. Okay, Mayor Lee. Okay, thank you so much. I hope everyone's feeling a little bit refreshed with some muffins and chocolate and water, breath of fresh air. This is the time for council to discuss and deliberate. So who would like to start?
Get my long arms. Thank you through the mayor. I feel a responsibility to at least start off the discussion, since I was the one that asked that the item be placed on the agenda tonight. My goal, and I hope one that is shared by all of us, is to hear from everyone, which I think we did tonight, on the issues raised, have a clear understanding of what happened and didn't happen, gain agreement on what to do about it, and move on. I also agree with everyone in this room and on the Internet or on Zoom who wants to move on. This council's been working well together. We've accomplished a lot of great things together. We have a lot of big work together that will not be easy. And I have full faith that this council can do it together. But I also think it's very important that we take a moment and stop and talk about what else is important. I disagree respectfully with all the speakers who say this is all just about housing and us versus them and things that started long before this election. This is specifically, at least from my perspective, about one issue, what the DA's report found and what we are going to do, which could be to do nothing. It could be to do many things. I hope we will act during this discussion with professionalism and civility, which I believe we have as a council up until now. And I hope that we will continue with it. I agree with those in the public who have encouraged us to act with civility and to act in the San Mateo way. That is particularly important when we have difficult discussions to have. And this is probably one of the most difficult discussions I have ever been through. And I'm sure that's shared by everyone else on this council and many in the audience as well. The reason why it's so important to me to bring these actions forward and have this discussion is that I believe the actions of the mayor, as conveyed by the DA's report, have shaken some fundamental principles that make our democracy strong. Number one, the ability of community members to advocate their ideas to elected officials without fear of retribution. And number two, the willingness of community members to volunteer to step to serve our community. If we don't have that, we don't have anything. And I know a number of people have referenced the letter that was written by former Mayor Jerry Hill, Claire Mack, and Jack Matthews. But it really summed up for me why I think this is so important. And I'd like to just share it before we start talking about actions we can take and hearing what other people have to say. They said, "Our local democracy in the city of San Mateo is strained and damaged. Accusations of insurrection regarding an otherwise democratic process in selecting a mayor and making an appointment to a vacant council seat do not reflect reality. In a democracy, residents, elected leaders, and interested stakeholders are entitled to have very diversioned opinions and to advocate for them. Elected council members such as us are obligated to take input from the community and from all stakeholders. If those same community members and stakeholders now believe any communication with those they elect will be leveraged against them and bring law enforcement to their door, who will want to speak up? This threatens the democratic process and is truly chilling. Without accountability, the fear and disillusionment will be a more permanent feature of our local politics and will continue to have a chilling effect on our democracy." Mayor Lee said in her April 25th letter to the Daily Journal that she calls for unity. "Let's choose to build a foundation for our future so we can focus on doing the people's work." I support that 1,000%, but I also believe that actions have consequences and people have accountability. I hope sincerely that the outcome of this discussion tonight will strengthen and clarify San Mateo's foundation and bring us that unity so we can prevent anything like this from happening again in the future and focus, as the mayor said, on doing the people's work. So what the letter did not say is what action should be taken. And I appreciate the city attorney's framework for our discussion, because it will give us all opportunity to put up our recommendations on the council and discuss them and see what, if any, consensus we come with. So perhaps I should be the first one who adds to that list. So whether it's city clerk or deputy city clerk, it's deputy city clerk, okay, who will be writing up on our slides. If you could put up that slide that the city attorney had put up before. Oh, it's even nicer now. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I think one option is clearly do nothing, right? We can decide tonight. Everybody's had what they had to say, and we can go home. Number two, something that I support is to create, as the city attorney suggested, an expression of opinion of the city council regarding Mayor Lee's action as determined by the DA's report of April 5, 2023. This document, I would, I would hope, would express the opinion of the San Mateo City Council that Mayor Lee did not act in the best interest of San Mateo in Mayors contained in the report by the following. Number one, conducting herself in a way unbecoming a council member. Number two, creating an atmosphere of fear that undermines the basic right of our residents to address their elected officials. Number three, disparaging members of the public with baseless allegations. And with that, I mean former Mayor Joe Gothels, Nicole Fernandez, and David Berudo, tarnishing the reputation of one of San Mateo's most service-oriented community members, Cliff Robbins, and preventing him from being a candidate for San Mateo City Council. And finally, not behaving in the San Mateo way of treating people, we've said repeatedly tonight, with dignity, courtesy, and respect. In terms of the, let's see, in terms of the long-term actions, I would like to suggest that we direct the city clerk, attorney, and staff to bring back to council strength and codes of conduct for the council boards and commissions, which we've heard a lot of support for tonight. Number two, direct the city attorney and staff to research and recommend a formal censure process for including, inclusion in the city codes of conduct for the council boards and commissions. And then number three, test new ways of gathering community input that enable more informal, in-depth discussion between members of council and the public. Because one thing I find we all have in common is any group that comes to this council passionate about what they want, whether it's the Climate Action Team or the Measure Y Team, walks away often frustrated because they get one minute of comment. We can't do anything about it during the meeting. They walk away thinking nothing's going to happen, and they say, "Why should I come back?" And that, to me, is incredibly troubling thing, which goes well beyond the issue tonight. But I would like to suggest that those are the, some of the things that we should talk about. And with that, I cede my time to someone else's discussion.
Can I make to the mayor one brief comment? Just on the statement of opinion, I said that was something that the council could do. It wasn't really a suggestion on my part. It was something that you should do.
I completely, I apologize for putting words in your mouth if I did, city attorney. Thank you. That is an option. And one I would add is, on the long-term options, we could choose to do nothing as well.
Anyone else?
Well, before I start, I want to start by apologizing for something that happened at the very end of the last council meeting. I agreed that, yes, we should agendatize this topic, but I made a comment that I wasn't sure to what end. And as soon as we got out of here, I heard it from everybody. And I felt bad, because I want to clarify that I did not mean that this topic was not important. It is. It was late, I was tired, and truthfully, I've been frustrated with this whole process. But I also wanted to show you that it's that easy for me to apologize when I make a mistake. It's three simple words: "I'm sorry." I also want to clarify that the truth is important. We, as council members, were elected to represent the people of San Mateo. In our role, we can and probably will make mistakes in our decisions. We are all imperfect. But being people of good character, which I believe all of us are, and being of high moral turpitude, this means that as elected officials, when we make mistakes, we should take responsibility and apologize. We cannot and we should not take, take it for granted that breaking rules is normal or status quo. There should be consequences to our actions. In the past three weeks, we've witnessed a huge public outcry on this subject. We've heard from dozens of upset residents, labor leaders, and from offices of many elected officials. All have been disappointed by what has transpired. In preparing for this conversation, I talked to the city attorney, as I think we all did, and said what can be done. And what I've learned, and I think we've heard this tonight, is that our current council guidelines and commissioner guidelines, while they do state the dos and don'ts for their respective roles, our documents do not provide us with any direction for what to do if someone acts inappropriately or breaks the rules. Part of this challenge is that these things can be very subjective. I think Prasanna told me this about 17 times. It's not the council's place to serve as jury, judge and jury, and we should not. But this won't always hold water. There will be times when clear wrongdoing was, was taken place. And when it does, we should be able to act. Currently, we don't have a censure process. And to try to create one now and apply it retroactively denies anyone accused of wrongdoing due process. So I don't think we should. I think we need to stop looking backwards. And I think instead, we need to improve our processes and move forwards. We need to add another layer of accountability. So what I'm proposing is a few things. When it comes to the city council code of conduct, I'd like to propose, and this will be a long term, that we direct our staff to look at other city council guidelines for conduct or code of ethics. We should have a code of ethics or conduct that includes consequences to misdeeds. We should also come back and review this with the city council. And we should put in the calendar, maybe 30, maybe 60 to 90 days out, that we review this and decide whether we want to put a new code of conduct in place. When it comes to commissioners, I would like to promote, propose something that's a change to the city charter. I think that it should only take three council votes, not four, to remove a commissioner from their seat. Commissioners should always be acting in the best interest of the city. They have sworn an oath to serve. If they're unable to do so, then the appropriate thing for them to do is step down. But should they not, then I suggest that it should only take a three-fifths majority to remove them from council, just as it would pretty much any other thing that we would approve as a council body. And I don't want to end this on a decisive note. What I've learned in the last 100 days is that all five of us have so much more in common than what actually divides us. I think it's time that we stop looking backwards, we work together, and we move forward as a team, and we do the right thing for the city of San Mateo. That's my comments. Thank you.
Okay, I want to start by thanking everybody who came tonight. Thank you to everybody who wrote in and commented. And, you know, clearly, I think the, the events of, of this day have had a lot of layers put on top of it. But, you know, when I took a step back and reviewed the report and the events of December 12, thinking back to my participation and thinking, you know, trying to put myself in other people's shoes, what would I do in, in Amarin's situation if I were approached by others with these types of communications? I thought of one specific change that I, I believe could have helped us through this instance, which is that if a council member becomes part of communication that raises potential Brown Act or other legal concerns in that council member's opinion estimation, the council member should share this information with the city attorney as soon as is practical. The city attorney's legal expertise can help to assess the communication and the concerns and to help determine whether further investigation may be required or not, and advise the council member and potentially the rest of the council on possible next steps. This was not exactly done in this case. Some information was shared, but some was withheld from the city attorney and other council members, including myself. and other council members, including myself, before and on December 12th. Of course, I'm not sure how sharing this information with the city attorney earlier would have necessarily changed anything in particular about the meeting on December 12th. But if anything had been proposed as a result of the communications that came in, this could have come from city staff via the city attorney as opposed to a council member. I think that the council members who were involved in December 12th might have felt better if the communications had been reviewed by staff. And perhaps more of the content could even have been shared before a decision would be made with it. I think this could have helped avoid putting council members in a position to consider removing a candidate from consideration, for example, or to consider other candidates based on information that had just been put forth in front of them and frankly, including withheld information. I don't believe council members should be put in this position. In response to... You know, I've heard some concern about infringing First Amendment rights to petition government. And I just... I believe that the vast, vast majority of correspondence that comes to council members does not and should not raise red flags in this regard. Members of the public should be aware, of course, that correspondence with council members about city business becomes a public record. And I just... I believe that, in general, this is not an issue. This was a special circumstance. I think, you know, and I do think it's important to just remind folks that those meetings in December were anomalies. I have been attending city council meetings for years and not a single one of them looked anything like those meetings. That was different territory and some unprecedented activity occurred. I also think... I frankly feel that multiple council members went outside of council guidelines and protocol during the meetings of December 5th and 7th and 12th. And that being said, I think that, given some of the unprecedented nature of what occurred, the fact that we have so many new council members on the dais and just the energy in the room that so many have been discussing, I feel that I agree with those who are calling for lowering the temperature, trying to apologize in some respects for what occurred, and moving on with an intent to do our very best going forward. I believe that the sections of our current council guidelines relating to communication already cover most of the best practices of conduct that I was just describing. I also noted that I see that Council Guidelines, Chapter 3, 5A, has a section noting "Communications and Access to Information", which I think is relevant to what I'm getting at, quoting, "Council members will have equal access to information. Information necessary for the city council to govern on a citywide basis will be shared with all city council members." So I think the practice of informing the city attorney as a council member, if that council member comes into communication that may raise concerns, may be somewhat more of an unwritten understanding of best practice based on the council guidelines. But I think it would be fine to consider adding something more concrete to council guidelines as perhaps something of a longer-term option if requested. I'm also open to further consideration of other items toward a code of conduct or ethics. So I feel like, for example, number five on the long-term options, I would support. I would support it as an item that would be looked into in the second half of this year or farther out as I feel we went through a blue-sky process recently in which we discussed council priorities. This was brought forward, you know, in some way by a council member at that time. Not enough council members supported it, but it would not shock me if enough council members were to support it tonight. And if that's the case, I would support it. But I would support it in a similar spirit in that perhaps it becomes a council priority among other council priorities. And as a number of people in the public mentioned, there are a number of other ones that I think need to be weighted together and considered. I personally am not going to focus on punitive actions tonight. Part of the reason, as I mentioned, is I do believe that the actions of December 12th did not happen in a vacuum. They happened because of other outside actions from council members on December 5th and 7th. And so I personally feel that in the spirit of healing as a council and moving on, I would not focus on specific punishments related to one specific piece of that tonight. But instead, think to something Roseanne Faust mentioned in the Progress seminar that a number of us got to attend recently about giving grace to those who are who are in public office that are working hard and trying to do the right thing and spending a lot of time and energy toward that. People will make mistakes. And I do believe that, overall, the way in which, you know, there were actions taken on December 12th that weren't the right call. And so I'm going to just try to start that or perhaps join Councilmember Newsom by personally apologizing to Cliff Robbins, I think, for my role in what happened on December 12th. I do think that... While I, you know, I am not saying that I don't believe that I didn't... That I, you know, of course, I did believe, Councilmember Lee's, that she had something serious to bring forth. And, you know, that was a judgment call. I think, in hindsight, I just feel that I shouldn't have acted with this information withheld. And I don't think that the way in which we approached that was correct. And I think it resulted in Cliff being unfairly removed from the process. And so I apologize for participating in that manner. But I do think we did, as a council, manage to find another deserving candidate who was supported by a majority. And I don't think we need to go back in time. And I don't think it would be productive to do so. So I just apologize to Cliff that it happened the way it did. And I think I will just take a moment to look at the other suggestions and see if I want to lend anything toward them. I don't think I can personally support the expression of opinion from the city council exactly as the deputy mayor described it, partially because I do feel that there was... There was a lot that happened in December, not just what happened on December 12th. And in an interest of trying to allow all council members to move forward with an interest in doing our best going forward, I think I would not be interested necessarily in supporting that. So I will say I appreciate the deputy mayor's comments about gathering community input. And my comment about how much time each person should get tonight is really just, you know, noting that I think this council has made different decisions on different nights. And we've had a number of items that have had a large number of people. And so I do think we should stick to something. I personally think that one minute is not enough, even when we have a lot of people. So I would be interested in, you know, perhaps us talking about that on another occasion. And I should probably stop there. Thank you.
Cliff and I sat next to you there on December the 12th as things rolled on. He's a friend of mine. I felt so bad at what happened to him. But I'll tell you, people who have spoken tonight on both sides of this are friends of mine. I like engagement. I like to listen to people. That's one of the reasons I take public transit when I can, to hear other views of other societal people, the way they feel about issues. That allowed me to call Trump the winner in 2016 in May because of how dissatisfied so many of the young people were if Bernie didn't get elected. So listening is a very important thing. You pick up a lot when you listen. And I've listened to everybody tonight. I don't think anything we should do regarding Mayor Lee's conduct on December the 12th should be punitive. But I will say that we need to get through this. At the ribbon-cutting for the Navigation Center, a person from Menlo Park approached me. They saw my name tag and said, "I watch your city council meetings for entertainment." That is not something that we need to be broadcasting to the community. We need to get through this. We have a lot of issues right now. The most is a good leader is retiring. We're two months away from needing a successor. And I'm not sure how many people have applied because of what is going on in this city or the quality of people that are applying. It's a big problem. We need to get through it. We have issues with the amount of money we have to do the infrastructure here. I mean, I can just blip them all off, but I don't want to leave depressed. So I want to get to the center of what I want to talk about. And that is, I think we need a code of conduct. I'm interested in the censure process, but I need to know more about it. I don't want it to be extremely cutting. When people make mistakes, they make mistakes. I think that we need to include the community in this. It'll be a process. It'll take some time. And I would suggest that we have a subcommittee of city council members that works with the city attorney. If that... Everybody feels that. I would like to put that on my long-term options, please.
Sorry, through the mayor, would you mind restating that?
Yes, sure. I would be happy to. I'd like to have a subcommittee of city council members, which would be no more than two, that would work with the city attorney to come up with these long-term options. And probably number three in short-term options, too.
Through the mayor, can I make a suggestion? So there can be a purpose for having council subcommittees, for example, to create some sort of document to bring back that's more appropriate for council members. But in terms of considering short and long-term options, instead of creating a subcommittee, I mean, that's sort of the purpose of this council item right now, is for the entire council to consider what should be the short and long-term options and then, you know, provide direction to staff.
Well, in rebuttal to that, I understand what you're saying. But at some point, before we see it, we need council people vetting it. And that's very common to do in committees and in city councils and state boards, to have a subcommittee that looks at it first.
Sure. No, maybe I misunderstood your comment then. I mean, maybe this is something after you narrow this list, if that's something you want to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And say, okay, we want to look at these two or three things. Let's flush that out a little more with the city attorney. That's common. That's sort of like an ad hoc subcommittee to work on an item before bringing it back to the council.
Yeah, I think you'd want somebody in that position to help you clarify. So what I would say is, and I want to make it absolutely clear that absent anything in this meeting today, about a week ago, I had a conversation with Mayor Lee and asked her to apologize. And so what I'm going to ask tonight is that the city council does consider an expression of opinion from the city council based on what happened on December the 12th. It's a... It's something I think we need to do. And one of the reasons is, and I've always... I've been a longtime supporter of Mayor Lee. I worked to get her appointed, as well as Cliff Robbins and everybody that was besurged by the December 12th statements were also supporters of Mayor Lee. So there has to be some expression that people were treated badly, including the city being put through this. So I'm going to quit talking and let other people discuss what I've just said.
I guess it's my turn. I think first and foremost, I want us to move on. I want and I hope for us to unify and focus on the work. This is all very painful on so many levels. And I look at the collective energy that's being spent on things that fundamentally, I think, detract from the most important and urgent needs that we are tasked to focus on. I don't take this job lightly. I put everything into the work. And I've been a lifelong advocate, an advocate for social justice and an advocate for truth. I was attacked for asking a council candidate his position on abortion, his position on Prop 1. I was attacked for not taking action against a commissioner who spoke about her personal experience feeling othered and stood in defense of a black couple who was feeling like they had no place in this community. I was attacked for not taking action against another commissioner who is a landscape architect, a veteran who has risked his life in war, and the son of a preacher man who actually openly admitted to moving a sign and ultimately apologized for it. actually openly admitted to moving a sign, and ultimately apologized for it. I gather that that case ultimately was deferred, was referred to the DA, and went, underwent a police investigation. At no point did I think that raising that issue should be penalized. If there was a question of criminality that needed to be explored, then we owe it to the people to do so. If there is a question about ethics, that is what we have a criminal justice system I have stood on the shoulders of giants. I have, I would not be in this position if it weren't for the supporters in this room, who, who were harmed in this process, just like many community members were harmed in this process, when it was, in your words, hijacked. I don't believe that, I don't believe that the actions that you took, council member and deputy mayor Nash, are worthy of censorship, or censuring. I, I want us to move on. I fundamentally disagree with the decisions that you made to deprive our city of representation, that caused conditions that perverted what should have been standard advocacy, that put me in a position of being afraid that if I didn't say something, it would be used against me. And I'll tell you that there's a regular and routine Freedom of Information Act request on all communications. I was in an impossible position, and I had nothing to gain. What I had to do was be as honest and transparent as possible, and reveal the fact that I was approached, I sought advice from our city attorney, I sought advice from our city manager, both of who confirmed concerns. It was not my choice to bring this to the DA, it was the choice and decision of our I've had private conversations, and I've attempted communications with both Cliff and Nicole, I've had a conversation with Joe, we hugged it out, we want to move on. I respect and admire both of you. I never wanted to hurt you, and I'm so deeply sorry that you were hurt in this process. Many community members were hurt in this process. When we talk about a chilling effect, I've talked to many community members who were afraid to come here today. They were afraid to come here because they were afraid of being attacked and harassed, as I have been. The example that our community is setting, in allowing, and condoning, and capitulating to the mistreatment of someone who is trying to act with integrity, and honesty, and demanding transparency, the only woman of color, the only person representing an underrepresented These are the moments that define us. Regarding the long-term options, I am open to adding to our council priority list a review of code of conduct language and best practices. For me, that would, you know, this is sort of a re, revisiting a decision that I felt we already, we already considered very carefully during Blue Skies. But if this is, you know, if this feels appropriate, and a good use of time and resources, then, then I, I won't object. But I feel that it should be folded into a standard process that is weighed against Those are my thoughts.
Perhaps I can just interject briefly, since I was mentioned. I'll keep it brief. So I had expressed some concern, certainly in December, about what the mayor had mentioned. But I also didn't have any facts, either. I didn't have any underlying information, so I couldn't provide any, any legal guidance, and couldn't reach any particular legal conclusions, either. So, and I did express a concern, but, but that was it. I'll leave it at that.
So just to clarify, you did not say that there was a legal basis for any action that happened on December 12th?
I didn't say there was any kind of legal basis for disqualifying any particular candidate.
Okay, thank you. I guess what I am looking at these options and saying, we are talking about, how do we make sure that people are not afraid to come out and talk, that they're not afraid to advocate on their behalf? And I think that's important to say. Many of our, our speakers tonight have talked about that, that the people who were involved in, who were the objects of the discussion and the allegations, have said that tonight. And they've all specifically asked for an apology, and an acknowledgement that this should not have happened. My desire to have an expression of opinion, and I would be interested in what both council member Hedges and council member Newsom have to say, is not for retribution, it's just to say that we have opinions on this council, and we're stating them, and this is a collective opinion, that that should not have happened, that they, you do not bring allegations without facts, and that we really need to focus on being clear and transparent as you want to be. So, my desire is to have that expression of opinion written from the city council, so that we can say, that is it, and let's move on. I would appreciate an apology on behalf of the people who have spoke that way, because I think it was, it did, it did a lot of damage, and we're all working through that now. I think the only way we can work through it is by calling it out, putting a bow around it, and moving on. We all say we want to move on. I know council member Hedges, you talked about supporting an expression of opinion, and I'd like to hear more about that from you, as well as you, council member Newsom.
Well, I'd be happy to say a couple more things. So, I want to make sure everyone understands, an expression of opinion, I want to see it come forward to the city council to vote on, but I will not vote for something that's punitive in sounding, or is, is in any way demeaning to the mayor. I just simply want an expression, expression of opinion that things should not have gone the way it went, and that mistakes were made.
I would sign that letter, too. I think many mistakes were made, starting with blocking my appointment.
And I would say that we had that discussion, we're going to have it again, in terms of what do we do about the election, or the selection of the mayor, but what we're talking about right now is opinion regarding the DA's report, and that's what we need to focus on. Council member Hedges?
As far as the selection of the mayor, I made my opinion at the Sky High meeting very clear, that we're all elected, or I'm not, I'm appointed, but hopefully soon will be elected, to the city council, and with that comes the opportunity to be mayor. And for, the, the issues that I can think of that have happened in this city, Eric Rodriguez being denied the chairmanship of the, the Planning Commission, he's not happy about that, and he probably will never be. Dorothy Chow, a wonderful woman that was an activist in this community, as long as I can remember, was denied the chair of the, of the Senior Citizens Committee. And she was not angry, she was hurt. I could go on. Gummager, when he was designed to mayor, I don't think he's ever gotten over that. So it's just bad politics to, to really do that, and it's usually because of political feelings. So, I would be for an automatic rotation of the mayor. I said that at the Sky High meeting, and I'll continue to say it, unless somebody has done something horrible, like, like a misdemeanor or felony, then they should not be denied the mayorship. It's just, it's just not good, good vo, face for the city. And so, I hope at some point we get to that in the, in the city charter.
I, I think that if, if we are looking at all of the conditions of the events that occurred, that is inextricable. It's an inextricable fact that our community, my community, my API community, my Jewish community, the entirety of San Mateo, the entirety of North Central and District 2, was denied representation.
I, I am not going to litigate what happened then, we're talking about this now, we can, we can go back and talk about that, because I disagree respectfully with you about that. What I'm asking is, what do we want to do here about the DA's report? And council member Newsom, what do you have to say?
Excuse me, it's a statement of fact. It's a statement of fact. It's not something that can be denied, because it is a fact that for a week, our city had no mayoral or deputy mayoral representation. That is a statement of fact. And so if we are going to discuss a letter and talk about the mistakes, what I'm saying is that everyone needs to own their part.
And what I'm saying is, we can, we can talk, but what I want to talk about right now is what happened in the DA's report, and we can have that separate discussion. And I'd be interested in council member Newsom's opinion.
The, the fact of the, the fact of the mayoral delay is in the DA's report. It is not something that can be erased from the report, or disregarded.
And I will respectfully always say that we continued the meeting, and we selected a fifth-person council member, and then we selected the mayor and deputy mayor. But that's why I want to talk about the DA's report. And I'm, I keep asking council member Newsom how he feels about this.
I agree with a lot of what all of you have said. In particular, I, I don't think it's appropriate to have anything punitive, simply because we didn't have rules in place that we were breaching or breaking. I, I understand that, you know, we had a part of this by not putting a mayor and a deputy mayor in place for a week, was an unprecedented thing. I, I also recognize, and I hope everybody remembers, that this was, should, should never have been a real issue, because what, what we'd committed to when we asked to wait a week, to put someone else on the council first, was we committed to making the senior member, Amaranz, the mayor, and we never wavered from that. I mean, we, we really never did. And in fact, as soon as we seated someone, the very next thing we did was nominated and made Mary Lee the mayor. So, that, that to me also really muddies the water, in that I, I don't even understand why there was, this, these conversations were thought to be happening at all. I mean, there was no need for quid pro quo at all, because we'd already made a commitment, and we did what we committed to doing. So, I, I realize or recognize now that it probably just comes down to a matter of trust. We didn't know each other well enough, and there was, you know, I guess, on, I can't put words in your mouth, but I guess in, in your mind, you did not trust that we would do what we said we were going to do. And, and for that, you know, I, I do recognize I have a part of that. But, at the end of it all, like, I, I don't think that that, you know, stops us from expressing an opinion of apology, in particular to the three people sitting right there, who were besmirched by, by what happened. Whether it was on purpose or not, we can't, we can't brush away or wash away the fact that it caused them pain, and it was not, was not appropriate. And so for that, I, I don't have a problem. In fact, I think we should, we should look at putting an expression of opinion in place for nothing less but to apologize to Cliff, and Nicole, Dave Berudo, Joe Gothels, and anyone else that was affected by this.
I would support that.
I appreciate the, the clarification there. And, and I guess I would just add that what was motivating the delay was an attempt to undermine the voter-approved charter that empowers the mayor to serve as tiebreaker. And it was essentially a filibuster. And, and I see you nodding, and I appreciate you acknowledging that, council member Newsom. And I see you nodding, and I appreciate you acknowledging that, Council Member Newsom. It was, as you said, a hijacking. And so many people were harmed. Many people were harmed. And I hear from Council Member Newsom an earnest acknowledgement of that fact. And I turn to you, because I know that you had a really big part to play in that, and I just wonder, is that something that you can also acknowledge? That you did not follow clear policy protocols? We are policymakers. If you want to change a policy that you disagree with, there is a process to go through. We had a council majority, we had quorum. There was no justification for that delay, except your motivation to disempower the mayor. And it caused great and very serious harm to this community, the community that I represent. And I have not heard you take responsibility for the harm that you have caused.
I respectfully disagree with you. Those actions in December were all about seating the fifth council member, and we don't need to keep going back to that. I think what I'm hearing here is that there is a desire for an expression of apology to Cliff Robbins, and Nicole Fernandez, and David Berudo, and Joe Gothels, and that perhaps, I hope we can all together support that, because their reputations were damaged, there were physical impacts as well, and that we should come together and agree on that, and that it sounds like maybe there is consensus around bringing back a strengthened code of conduct. And I would ask about including a formal censure process going forward in that code of conduct. And that would include directing staff to look at other codes of conduct. So we're trying to be prescriptive and say, "How do we deal with things that even in 2015 hadn't been thought of? Let's be as specific as possible so that we can go forward, and then together act transparently and together..." We've done a lot of work together so far. I think we can do more work, but I do believe we need to sort of put the point on it, and these, you know, changes to the strengthening of the code of conduct and the censure, and I would support the adjustment to the process to remove commissioners and gathering community input. Those are all long-term things that can come out of tonight and this process that can be positive, and that can help everyone in the community, and certainly all of us. And then we need to work together on things that are important as well as this, whether it's housing, or climate change, or anything that comes along. And as Council Member Hedges mentioned, we have a very important decision to make about selecting our next city manager, and that's a responsibility I know we all take extremely seriously and want to work together closely on. So I would like to get to those things, and I would commit to always working transparently, but to always listen to constituents and try my best to hear them. And I think we heard a lot tonight, and I think we've made some progress if we can come together around those things.
I am your constituent as well, and you hurt me. You hurt my family. You hurt my community. Please hear that.
I hear you say that. I do. I do. So can we find some consensus in delivering apology to the four individuals that we have mentioned?
Just, I want to clarify something I should have brought up earlier. When Council Member Newsom brought up reducing the number to three to remove an officer or council member, I'm absolutely against that. Not because I think it's a bad idea, but because I think that it would allow for politics to enter the realm of the city, rather than people, cold hard facts that somebody has violated their term of office.
I agree.
Okay, so we don't have support for that.
And secondly, I'll say, of course, we want to apologize to the people that were harmed by this. Not only were they harmed, but they had to hire attorneys, and quite frankly, could have faced losing their jobs.
Council Member Newsom?
I don't think we should do nothing. I think we should do something in the form of either expression of opinion or expression of apology, depending on what we have brought back to us from staff as deemed appropriate. I think we should review the code of conduct. We should make sure that, I think we should review the code of conduct, make sure that if we adopt a code of conduct that has, for example, censures or ramifications to actions. And, yeah, I think, you know, I hear your concerns with the process to remove a commissioner, and I see both sides to it. I mean, I also see, you know, the fact that it makes it almost impossible to, or maybe the solution is, is when we address the code of conduct, that that makes it so that if a commissioner is in breach of conduct, that they are removed, and that removes the necessity to have it be three of five, or four of five. Those are my thoughts on all those things.
You're writing down names. You can put me alongside Mr. Newsom on no, on number one, and yes, on bringing back strengthened code of conduct, and pretty much yes on everything else, as long as it falls within the realm of good thinking.
I thought I had provided this guidance earlier, but I can repeat. I think my yes would go toward the long-term option of number five, which is direct staff to look at other codes of conduct, as was, I think, described by Mayor Lee, and I believe Council Member Newsom mentioned something similar, or I feel as though I heard multiple council members interested in that, so I guess we'll have to see how this all shakes I think that will be a useful tool in the future. I think with regard to the expression of opinion, as I mentioned, I think it just seems, I have difficulty with focusing only on the actions of December 12th, when I do firmly believe that the actions of December 5th helped lead to the actions on December 12th. I don't think the actions of December 12th happened without December 5th. And I think the actions of December 5th put us in uncharted territory, and I think it helped prompt this situation. And, you know, we had, because of the delay, we had four council members without a tiebreaker in place, needing to select a fifth council member. If we deadlocked 2-2 and continued to just deadlock, we would have found ourselves in a situation in which the lack of a mayor and deputy mayor would have continued for an unforeseen amount of time. And, you know, concerns were raised at the time about the problems that could come from that. And I think that made, I could see how that would make it harder for council members to get rest, and, you know, have a fully clear, I guess, well, at any rate, I would propose that we consider, as I believe the mayor suggested, something a bit broader. And I think if enough council members could be interested in something that acknowledges that there was a, you know, that each of the meetings of December involved some council member activity that went outside of guidelines, and caused some harm and a breach of the public trust, that we apologize for those who were harmed as a result of that deviation, and that we, you know, are going forward, will make a council priority to seek a code of conduct that perhaps includes stronger language to bring back the city's trust. That is something I would support, and I hope others would support.
Thank you for your comments. I think I would maybe, perhaps, Martin, say, given what I'm hearing, that there is support, and I would support, a direct apology to the four individuals named that is just specific in that, and is not connected with anything other than the activities of the DA's report. And that is, you know, it's focused on apology. I'm not hearing support for the broader things that I was proposing be included in the expression of opinion, but I do think that there is support for a specific apology for these individuals from the council and from the individuals. And I would also support bringing back the strengthened code of conduct. I think these are all connected, examining a formal censure process in the code of conduct. We can always gather opinion, yes, I'm for that. I'm not for doing nothing. I agree with Council Member Lorraine and Council Member Hedges about looking at other codes of conduct, which I would think would be a natural part if you're going to bring back a strengthened code of conduct, just like the city clerk did earlier. You look at other codes of conduct to see what might work. And I'm not hearing support for the adjustment to the process, so I would leave the focus on the code of conduct and the censure and community input, as well as a specific apology to the individuals that we've discussed.
I would like to ask for further clarification, because what I heard from Council Member Newsom was a clear acknowledgement of that, and also Council Member Hedges, that all of the events, starting from December 1st, are part of the outcome, resulted in the ultimate outcome and harm of many community members, and I think an apology is in order. And so I just wanted to clarify with both of you, when you were acknowledging that, in your words, Council Member Hedges, that you disagree with the, you know, abandoning the rotation, that you disagreed with the fact that our community was deprived of mayoral representation, and that my appointment was blocked, that that was a part of the events that led to the DA's investigation. I heard the same from you, Council Member Newsom, that an acknowledgement that all of these things are part of a whole picture. And so I'm not exactly seeing, I'm not seeing that reflected in the notations here, and so I fully, personally, I do support issuing an apology. I think that on behalf of the whole community, there were many mistakes and missteps, including the one that sadly, I don't hear you taking responsibility for or apologizing for. It saddens me deeply. And I think I have to point out that there's a gross double standard.
If I could say, you went a little farther than I was talking about. I was talking about my feeling that we should have a rotation of mayor. That was in the future. I'm not going as far as you are. I think it was very bad what happened to those four folks, and I think it was probably a lack of judgment on your part. I'll just put it that way, that you didn't understand how far the Brown Act went or didn't go. And I've reviewed some of the texts, and clearly, it was just people saying, "We prefer this candidate." And because it wasn't me, doesn't bother me at all. So I'm not going as far as you are.
So is there support for a specific letter of apology to these four individuals?
Absolutely.
And myself as well?
I could, Mayor Lee?
Please.
So it sounds like the council has generally coalesced around two things. The first would be a short-term letter of apology to four individuals. My recommendation would be that the council form a subcommittee to draft that letter. I don't think that's for staff to draft. So I think you should do that. And then the second, longer term, I think, which brings a number of these things together, but is generally, sort of starts around item number five, which would direct staff to look into other codes of conduct. I think that would be a pretty broad look from staff's perspective. I think the direction I'd like to get tonight would be the timing of that. As has been mentioned, my preference, which was that we fold this into the Blue Sky process, and this be considered along with all other city priorities to ensure that it can be resourced properly. So then it would be, at that point, it would be brought back for next year's consideration. And then we could look into, you know, all of the other things related to the code of conduct, and bring that back comprehensively as part of that process. So is there agreement on those, or is there three heads nodding on those three things?
Yes, and I'd like to suggest that for the subcommittee would be Lisa Nash and Adam Lorraine.
I would be happy to be on the subcommittee.
More work for you, Adam.
I'm happy to serve if others are okay with it and not passionate about joining the subcommittee themselves.
I have total trust in both of you to do this.
Thank you. And I guess the only comment I would make, city manager, is that when you're talking about the code of conduct, and it is all perspective, it includes recommending or researching and coming back with a recommendation on a formal censure process as part of the code of conduct.
You know, as is the case for most things that we bring through a process like this, I think the first thing would be a study session, which would talk about a number of different things. which would talk about a number of different things, including censure. We wouldn't start with a process. We would start with, here are the things council can consider. We would get council direction from there, and then that's where we would then look to then create the code of conduct. And if there were a censure process included in that, that's where it would go. So we wouldn't start off with that, but it would be included in the consideration, or council's initial consideration.
That makes sense. Thank you. I think we have a majority.
Okay, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is number eight, Community Development Block Grant Draft 2023-27, Consolidated Plan and Draft 2023 to 24, Action Plan, Approval and Adoption. Looks like we have a presentation from Eloisa Murillo Garcia, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Eloisa Murillo Garcia, Housing Manager. And with me, I have Frankie Louington, who is our consultant, who assisted us in the preparation of the consolidated plan and annual action plan. And he has a very brief presentation that he will go through.
Pardon me, folks, but just through the mayor, as a point of order, given that it's 11:40, I believe council may need to just vote on continuing.
If I may, through the mayor, so the guidelines say that the council, you know, you could vote or you could just do it by consensus. And by actually moving to the item, that kind of indicates consensus to actually tackle the item.
I support pushing through as well.
I agree as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Honorable Councilmembers. As Eloisa mentioned, my name is Frankie Louington. I'm an associate with Root Policy Research. We are a housing research and community planning firm based in Denver, Colorado. And we have been assisting the City of San Mateo, along with the City of South San Francisco and San Mateo County on putting together their consolidated plans and annual action plans. Next slide, please. Just a brief overview of what a consolidated plan is. It is a planning document required by HUD every five years as a condition of receiving federal funding. The plan is put together using a combination of data and community outreach to help identify and determine housing and community needs, concerns, and as well as gaps in supportive services for low and moderate income populations. The consolidated plan guides how funds will be spent over the five-year cycle. And annual action plans are the action mechanism to, excuse me, that specify how funds will be spent each year of the con-plan cycle. Next slide, please. So just a really high-level overview of the community engagement that went into the development of the plan. So as I mentioned, we coordinated with the City of San Mateo, South San Francisco, and San Mateo County on our engagement strategy. We held four countywide community meetings, which included a public hearing at a Housing and Community Development Committee meeting to identify needs. We held a City of San Mateo-specific meeting to identify needs, held out the, one of the Community Relation Committee meetings in December of 2022. We received input from over 40 stakeholders from all across the county. And then we also put out a resident and a stakeholder survey. And we almost got near, we received nearly 500 survey responses from around the county, 80 coming from residents who identified themselves as living in the City of San Mateo. Next slide, please. So what we heard from that and community, from those community engagement efforts specific to the City of San Mateo were, in relation to housing needs, the need for more affordable rental housing for low-income renters, more supply for people using housing choice vouchers to actually utilize those vouchers, more affordable homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income residents, as well as more emergency shelters and permanent housing options for people experiencing homelessness or housing instability. Next slide, please. The greatest unmet community development needs we heard were more affordable childcare options and mental health services. These were two of the top needs heard throughout the county. We also heard a need for more supportive services for vulnerable populations, sidewalks, streetlight, and other neighborhood improvements, as well as job training programs and better access to reliable public, and that should say transit. Next slide, please. In relation to unmet economic development needs, we heard a need for more revitalization of neighborhood businesses or commercial areas in the city. Again, more job training programs or job training centers, and then more opportunities for startup, for local startup businesses or existing businesses that are looking to expand or looking to relocate. Next slide, please. And then just a quick overview of the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan goals. Next slide, please. So a lot of the needs that we heard were similar to the needs that were articulated in the previous consolidated plan, 2018 to 2022. So we engaged with the city's Community Relations Commission to talk about those plans and decided that the existing goals still reflected the needs that were identified by the community. And so there are seven goals here. They are not in prioritization. They are just for numbering purposes. So no goal in this, on this slide is prioritized above another. Next slide, please. So this is just a really brief snapshot of where the funding is going for this fiscal year. So this is what is articulated in the annual action plan, where CDBG funds are directed, as well as where other sources of funding are also directed. And then just a brief visual to give you an idea of where those CDBG funds are going. Next slide, please. And so the recommended action for tonight is to approve and adopt the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, as well as the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan, additionally authorizing the submittal of both plans to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And I should mention, on April 19th, the Community Relations Commission recommended approval of both of these plans for your consideration. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, questions? Please go ahead.
So I'm just looking at the amounts, and I was just curious. Administration is 105,000. It looks like it's about 10% of the money. Is that common for it to be as high as 10% administrative program?
Yes, if I can jump in. The CDBG regulations allow up to 20% for administration. So in San Mateo, we actually take less. And the administration also includes funding for the city's fair housing provider, which is Project Sentinel. So not that full amount is spent on staffing.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess we can open this up to public comment.
I have no in the council chamber's speaker slips. Excuse me, if anyone wants to comment, please bring those slips up now remotely. If you would please raise your hands if you would like to comment on this item. I'll give you a moment. Madam Mayor, I believe we have no public comment.
Okay, well, with that, we all close public comment. And would anyone like to start with providing, let's see. Would anyone like to provide any comments on this item?
I will. I think it looks like a good program. Seems to be going to the right place. And I have no objection to it whatsoever.
Adopted, the Councilmember Hedges used the pen to get the button method. I would support the recommended action of approving and adopting the consolidated plan and authorizing the submittal of both plans to HUD.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Well, I'm sad that this item didn't get, I think, the time that it actually really deserves. It's an over 100-page document, a really thorough and comprehensive work. I was very proud of the in-depth approach that our city is taking, particularly around the protection of Samiteans who are renters and also aspiring homeowners. So I, you know, I just wanted to commend you, Eloisa, and thank you for a lot of work that I'm sure went into this. And with that, I will vote to approve.
Thank you very much. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, let's move on. Public hearing item number nine, fiscal year 2023-24, Comprehensive Fee Schedule Approval. I believe we have a presentation from our Finance Director, Rich Lee, and Senior Management Analyst, Carly Toffey.
I've given Ms. Toffey the night off, so it'll be a very brief presentation on my part.
Very kind of you.
All right, so before you this evening is the proposed Comprehensive Fee Schedule for fiscal year 23-24. Just a few highlights. First, we did properly notice this with public notices posted in the Daily Journal. For the most part, all of these increases are based on CPI. The CPI was the change from November of '21 through October 2022, which was 6%. In general, we are limited to increased fees to the total cost to provide the services. And yes, services are not included in this update. Just a few highlights of the revisions to the Comprehensive Fee Schedule. First, there's an added fee for outside detail for contracted parking enforcement services. There were some fees, I mentioned, for the most part, it was by CPI. There were some that were above CPI, and that's really just to match the cost of service. That's within the city's rights to do so. There were some fees that were eliminated. The previous council gave direction to, and this is consistent with the plant cell library system, to eliminate overdue fee charges. And there were some fees because these facilities are no longer available to be rented out. So those fees have been eliminated for parks and recreation. And with the police outside detail for senior dispatcher, that classification no longer exists. And the recommendation before you this evening is to adopt a resolution to approve the revisions to the proposed fiscal year 23-24 Comprehensive Fee Schedule. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. Rich, I just noticed in the report that what looked like a substantial increase in the heritage tree fee and a note about increase for consistency across all city departments. And I was just curious if you or another department who might happen to be here could elaborate a little bit as to the meaning of that, please.
I can speak to it in general, and perhaps if our Parks and Recreation Director would like to join us, she can speak to it in a little bit greater detail. But in general, appeal fees to the commission or the council, we saw there was a disparity between varying fees. So really, this was to set it at the rate that was consistent with other appeal fees. It was quite a large discrepancy.
I see. So the consistency is that appeals of other sorts?
Correct.
Not necessarily related to trees, are more in line with the current proposed rate?
That's correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Good question. Any other questions? No? Let's open it up to public comment, please.
If you'd like to provide public comment on this item, please raise your hand or deliver a speaker slip. I'll give you a moment. Madam Mayor, we have no hands raised and no speaker slips.
Okay, we'll close the public comment. And would anyone like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the revision to the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 Comprehensive Fee Schedule? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, well, that was our last public hearing item, and we will move on to reports and announcements. Are there any reports and announcements?
I just have a quick one.
Yes.
Excuse me, thank you. That last night, a number of us went bowling at Belmateo with the McCollum family and had a wonderful time. It was an action that was a gift that the Education Foundation had auctioned off. And I think we all had a great evening. And I just wanted to say on behalf of their daughter that over Memorial Day weekend, the Addams Family, the musical, is going to be produced. And she encourages all of us to attend. It's going to be fantastic. So there we go.
Anyone else?
I wanted to report something very nice happened for Parkside and Shoreview. The lights have been out, especially in Parkside, the streetlights over a fairly large portion of Parkside. And there was an interplay between PG&E and the city about who was responsible for hooking the lights back up, and the city found a way to do it. And the Parkside and Shoreview neighborhood wanted me to give their appreciation to the city for that effort.
No? Okay, I have an item to bring forward for consideration. We have received a request for sponsorship for the Sam Seda event. I am locked out of my computer and can't refer to it. But basically, it's a sponsorship opportunity to support, I believe it's, is it the 70th anniversary for Sam Seda? There is a, some kind of talk, something like, I'm totally blinking. Anyway, it is a sponsorship opportunity to support Sam Seda, celebrate their 70th anniversary. I believe the amount is less than $1,500. I want to say it's more like $1,250?
I think it was $1,200, $1,250. I think you're right.
So I would like to bring that forward. It comes with, I believe, like five seats at the event and some other perks. Is there consensus to bring this forward as a future agenda item with more details?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, we got nodding heads. Okay, my next item is I wanted to give a plug to Soul Stroll. Soul Stroll is a phenomenal fundraising event that supports our very own Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council. They are having an event on May 20th, and it will take place at San Mateo High School. And it's a really important fundraiser for an organization that is directly addressing health disparities across the entire county. And is homegrown, founded by a North Central resident, Ms. Gloria Brown. And they have been instrumental in supporting many health equity initiatives during the pandemic and preceding the pandemic, specifically around breast cancer prevention and awareness and many other things. So I hope that the community will join this event called Soul Stroll. It's on May 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And we have flyers at the door. And then my last announcement is to share that And then my last announcement is to share that at Lights and Sirens, at the Police Activities League event, the city was honored as a distinguished community partner. We received this beautiful award. And it was really spectacular turnout at Lights and Sirens. They do not disappoint. They always have a full house. And it was very special to be the recipient of this award. And so we're very fortunate to have a wonderful PAL program that is really the envy of the entire county. So with that, if there's no other announcements, then we can adjourn. Okay, thank you.